Of all courses of the students to take, including accelerated and advanced, previously pre-aid courses. And so this current year, what we have done is we have completely revamped fifth grade. Sixth and seventh is in her baiting year, so that would be, we're collecting that data. And then we are also writing eighth grade, which is including any of those advanced courses, which could be biology, advanced biology, algebra, math, algebra, and so forth. So those will be written in approved tempers board in June or July for that approval. And then we'll move on to full high school moving forward. And you can see on that next slide, we can sort of see that hierarchy or the shaded area. So we're moving out of that connections classes and moving more to the yellow and see that timeline. We will be moving to our full curriculum. As courses, new teach adopt, um, adoptions, things like that. We'll be revamping courses as time goes on, continuing elective courses as those happen. Again, um, adding AP courses, which don't exist in any approved courses for TEA right now also.
Roddy, can you hit it one more time? Okay. There's the picture of what she was just describing. So the yellow represents the I University Prep developed curriculum. So you can see as we go along, we'll have more and more of the yellow. Okay, so the last slide we want to share just summarizes the projected cost to support this enrollment and curriculum development growth for the next five years. As you can see there, um, the curriculum costs are going down each year. And as Kay mentioned, the curriculum cost is, is a per people cost. So it's $900 a student. So with the increasing enrollment, we would have just continued to see that cost increasing, increasing. For example, for the enrollment of $1,400, I mean, 1,400 students, that would be approximately 1.3 million in curriculum cost. Where adding the staff to write the curriculum is about 600,000. So it's about half that. And eventually, you know, owning that curriculum, those curriculum writers can move into, to teaching. So that would be the plan for that. I also want to point out on this slide, the very last line of the expenditures is the marketing line. And we have shifted just some, some budget from some of the other categories down to that marketing line. Because we know that that marketing is going to be a very important piece in being proactive in meeting our enrollment goals for 21, 22. And I'm not sure, Dr. Rogers, do you want to add anything to that on the marketing and maybe a plan?
The, the, the current terrain, we are on the cusp of some changes. And we need to definitely be proactive in our approach of we're, we're the head of the game, we're the leader for PAC, and we can remain that. So a very proactive marketing plan is what needs to happen.
Concerning the curriculum, is there a way we can monetize that down the road where we can actually be a vendor and send and sell it to other programs that are starting up? Or do you have to get certified for that or what?
So that was a conversation at, at one point. And so it has been on that. As far as the curriculum with its, right now, it is, it has to go through TDA. So we have a 100% TCA line, I may call entire compliance accessible. So there would be that opportunity down the road, but it is a discussion that we have to address.
Any other questions?
Hey Lisa.
I'm sorry, Becky, yes.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, I know we've had multiple discussions in the past about how to monetize the curriculum development that we've been doing. And I think especially with the AP versions, there will be some opportunity there. And of course, getting through TEA, that's always been a hurdle for everything. I can tell you, and I know you know this already to Dr. Rogers, there are a lot of schools out there gunning for starting their own virtual school. They are salivating at that prospect. And so I'm actually wondering, you know, do we need to look at increasing that marketing line item actually a little bit more? Because we are the premier virtual school in this state. And, um, you know, I, I want parents to have that choice and, and know that they can come here and get a GCISD quality education. But I'm, I'm really concerned that if we don't have a robust marketing plan, that we're going to be bulldozed by these groups, particularly the ones, uh, maybe not quite as much from other school districts, but, but some who maybe have a little bit more flexibility in their budget than we do. But certainly by these for-profit entities that have no constraints on their marketing.
That's certainly something we can consider as, I don't think we've really quite put together the marketing plan. But during the budget process, I would assume that we'll be working on that. And, you know, as we can put some cost to what that would look like, we certainly could adjust that.
We also realize that we know that the most important time in just the next few months, when people are deciding what they're going to do next year.
Right, yes.
We'll need to move quickly on that.
Yeah, I've already had people in other parts of the state reach out to me about IU University Prep for next school year.
Well, they were, they were being used as an example throughout the entire year by our, by Mr. Marath as well. So.
But the nice thing is we're so far into this.
Right.
I mean, we, you know.
My question, Kay, I know right now we're at 12, 1208. And you're looking at adding seven more staff. As I'm reading in one more counselor, which give us three counselors for the IU University Prep.
Three.
That's what I'm saying. So altogether, we'd have three. Okay. And do you have, is there a waiting list right now?
There is. Right now, there wasn't a fall and there's a summer.
Jorge, I think had a question.
Jorge, you have a question?
Oh, yes. So what is limiting us to have a project of 1,700 versus 2,000 or 2,500 or whatever number you want to pull? What's, what's the main issue? Why we would not tune in for more?
But you know, one of the things I think we need to do is the best, that's one of those are ones that can best. To do that, we did, um, growing intentionally. Part of what makes IU University Prep great is where the bottom line service is first. So your correct, our competitors out there who grow exponentially because of saving. Just pulling up old, old numbers. The best one out there is 60%. And we're staying in the top. So.
Talking about completion rate, right? So 60% completion versus 90% completion. And we all know that that's how we're funded on, on students that complete.
Look at our, just our, just our rating, we're an A and it ranges from D to B up there. And so, um, we also, you know, speaking of the marketing budget, yes, we are playing in a field that have millions for our marketing budget. And so that is a difference. So I think the key is always going back to who we burn, who is growing intentionally and doing it well. The time and importance of well-trained teachers, support systems for teachers, and then support systems for our team. So when it's going to be a big league, it creates challenge. And we want to keep the bulk, we want to keep kids from the work. And so I just think that has to be part of our decision growing, sure we're doing it.
Do we have, I know that you, we, we did some sort of deal with another district at some point where we were serving some of their classes. Are we looking at doing the same, same with other districts or not?
Um, we aren't this year, that has been a conversation. We do continue to offer a couple of courses to Universal School Network catalog as we develop more high school courses. So this coming year will be the first that we have more high school courses. And that will, the catalog course, they have been, we intend to provide those to any public school in Texas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jorge. Becky, did you have any questions? I'd look down at you. I'm sorry, Louis, I didn't see you.
So I'm going to put you on the spot. But because you're awesome, IU University Prep is awesome. From where this has come from in 2014, 15, and the board approved it to now money generating and being number one in the state of Texas and number four in the United States, which is just impressive to leadership. And you talk about hiring people in the process. So here's where I'm going to put you on the spot. Where do you want to see this program in two years and in three years? Because here we're at, we're at this crux of all this online because of COVID. Now that we are being sought after, leadership, Mike McGrath, I mean, everybody was coming after you. My students were product of it for a semester, which was just phenomenal because Avery is back in person at CMS. And she's like, I got 100 on my Spanish test. I got 100 on my math test. She's like, and taking, I mean, it's like, it's, I mean, it's phenomenal. It did everything it was supposed to do to get her caught up. So where do you want this to be in two years for you, your staff, for GCISD and within the state of Texas and in the country?
I think it's.
Cause I know you have those goals.
I think we want to align with what our goals are as, as a team of the people that are in the room right now, first off. And, and stay true to our mission and be the leaders of that in both what we're doing for kids, our service, their grades, getting them where they want to be. And I think we need to continue to grow.
And what does that mean? Do you have a number in your head?
I, I think we just have to decide that together, so.
All right, I won't push anymore. Thank you. Appreciate it, Dr. Rogers.
Do we have any other questions for either Dr. Rogers or Diane?
I would just say to add, to add to the response, this legislative session is really important. And what happens in this legislative session will impact in one way or another are, are the way we move forward. So, um, you know, the people that think this is easy, just haven't done it yet. This, this, this is very difficult. And we're, we're so fortunate to have, you know, Kay and her team leading this work. You know, you talk about the accolades. That's incredible. That's incredible to build it like that. And so I just want to say publicly, thank you, Dr. Rogers. Please thank your team, your teachers, your support staff, the people who have built it from the ground up, the people that have just joined us are really a part of something special.
Is that it for you also, Diane? Thank you very much. Thank you both.
So next on our list is a workshop about elementary bilingual program. And to be able to talk us through that, we've got several folks, Dr. Shiver, Dr. Norman, Cox is there. Ms. Garrett is also here from Cannon. So Dr. Schnatz, let me kick it over to you and for any kind of introduction you may have.
Yes, so really over the last or last several years, we've been looking at, you know, just the efficiencies and the, the performance or productivity of our, of all of our personalized programs, the dual language program being one of them. And so as we move forward in looking at those personalized experiences, just the offerings, how do we maximize those experiences? You know, we have, we, we have analyzed our dual language program now for a while, as I mentioned. And so tonight, we want to present to you just some information around that. Most recent analysis and just, you know, just kind of some thoughts as we look, look ahead at how we can really optimize and maximize those resources around our dual language program. So I'm going to kick it over to Dr. Norman.
Thank you, Dr. Schnatz. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Tonight, myself, Dr. Shiver, and Dr. Cox will be presenting on our dual language program, our roles to continue to ensure student success in our program decisions and continue to evaluate our systems and progress. Tonight, our goals are to provide you with a program overview, a student enrollment update, staffing update, and a program recommendation. Dr. Cox, our Director of World Languages oversees our dual language program in partnership with instructional leadership. She will start us off with a program overview.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. So to begin with a program overview, overview, we need to understand the offerings that we currently have in GCISD. Our bilingual program is required by statute because we do have 20 students at at least one grade level across the district. And in GCISD, our bilingual program service model is a dual language program. So just a few definitions that'll help you understand the slides coming up. We do have a two-way program. And that two-way program just simply means that there is a group of native Spanish speakers and a group of native English speakers learning English and Spanish together, served by two teachers, one teacher with a bilingual certification, one teacher with an ESL certification. The one-way follows the same model, except the learners are not mixed. One-way consists of one group of students who are English learners. So they're native Spanish speakers in our case. We follow a 50-50 model, which means they get 50% of their content in English, 50% in Spanish per week. And then we'll talk just briefly about a few of the definitions. We have lots of acronyms and they can be confusing. The, the acronym LEAP or LEP is the umbrella under which students are labeled if they are still acquiring English based on their initial language proficiency assessment. So LEAP is the big term. It's on its way out because it's a, it can be negatively perceived as something is wrong. You're limited in something. And it's being replaced with the, with the acronym EL or English learner, which presumes positivity as they're adding English to, to their already linguist, already, their linguistic repertoire they already have. So LEAP and EL are synonymous. We haven't gone away totally from LEAP because it's still in a lot of the PIMS reporting and those kinds of things. Bilingual refers to, the way we'll refer to it tonight, as those students who are English learners who qualify for a bilingual program. We will have English learners throughout VCISD that do not qualify for a bilingual program because their native language is something other than Spanish perhaps, or their parents have selected a different service model other than a bilingual program, which in our case is dual. Then oppositely, non-LEAP and EP are synonymous. So non-LEAP means you are English proficient. So again, the more positive language being introduced in the past couple of years. All right. At this moment, our campus assignments, you can see Timberline serving the majority of the campuses in the district. We are required to provide transportation for students who qualify for a bilingual program whose parents accept that service to a service location. So those are the campuses served by Timberline currently. Silver Lake currently serves, uh, Silver Lake, their own, their own zone. Additionally, they service Dove Elementary. And then Cannon at this moment serves their own attendance zone only. All right. So these, the next slide is where you're going to practice your vocabulary. So you can see in kindergarten at Timberline, there are 19 students on the Spanish side of two-way. Their partner class is listed in the column right next to them, 14. So those, that group is taught by two teachers and they are mixed in their learning and their content. Additionally, we have a one-way program at Cannon because there are 19 more students that qualify for bilingual at Timberline, but not enough students who applied for the lottery to fill the English side to make another two-way. So we serve them in a one-way with one bilingual teacher. The final column on the next few slides gives you their zone information. And what's important to remember about that zone information is that it is not, what is not included are the students who applied for the English side through the lottery. So I indicated that this was LEAP-only, students who qualify for a bilingual service. Now, each student, each number represented there has its own individual story. They could be there because they're a sibling of a student who already lotteryed in, in years prior. The students could have moved and elected to stay in their specialized program, which we do allow when there's space available and they are in good standing. So you can see that of those kindergarteners, two are currently a part of the Bear Creek attendance zone and one a part of the Cannon zone and so on. I'll point out in the second grade column, in the one-way program, you see that there are 17 LEAP or 17 ELS and one non-LEAP. This particular student, and it will be the same in the future slides, met the exit criteria for our program. So they were able to take a test last summer to demonstrate their English proficiency. Normally, we would use Tellpass for that, but because of the pandemic last year, we did not have complete Tellpass. So they did present themselves for an additional assessment. So that student is now classified as English proficient. But because of our model of dual language, they are allowed to continue in that dual language setting through the rest of their career, should they, should they choose that. They certainly have the option to go to an English-only. But that's one of the benefits of districts having dual language is once they exit, they don't have to leave their language, they can continue learning both. So I won't read those numbers to you, but now you can understand exactly how they're made up. So in summary, at Timberline, there are 237 students that qualify for bilingual services. 11 of those are zoned elsewhere. So that makes their count 226. And those students are served by 15 bilingually certified teachers. Again, does not take into consideration the English cohorts of that dual program. The next slide is the data for Silver Lake. So very similar to Timberline in that there's two-way English, two-way Spanish. They have the benefit of having only two-way because there are enough students who applied in the lottery that are native English speakers to make half of another class. And so we're able to serve them all the way in two-way. The only difference is that's with one teacher. The one teacher is self-contained with, with both of those groups. And then you can see that zone information looks a little different than Timberline's. Dr. Shiver will speak more to this in a few slides. But the, the biggest reason is that that's where they begin their career in pre-K. All right. There's the summary for Silver Lake. Yes. Yes.
On the previous slide? Can you explain that two-way Spanish-English again?
Sure. So in kindergarten at Silver Lake, there is a one pod of two-way that's served with one bilingual, one ESL teacher. The third column is a single teacher that speaks English and Spanish, but the children are still mixed. So there are 11 students that are learning English and four learning Spanish together in one room. It's a self-contained two-way.
So these classes, even counting the, just looking at the Timberline, you have two-way Spanish, two-way English, and one-way at Timberline?
Yes.
Do they teach the same classes in English, all of them, and the same classes in Spanish? Or do they do like a, you know, English and math in English and the other ones in Spanish?
They do 50-50 per week. So one week they would do their humanities in English and math science in Spanish.
And then they switch it?
Next week, yeah, so that they, every day they get both languages. It's a long time for a six-year-old to go a whole week without hearing the other language. So they get both every day.
Okay, and every, and every single one of these, do they do the same thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're at Cannon Elementary. And you can see, um, when the slides catch up to me, that, um, we are in the last year of a phase out of the two-way program. The last cohort is in fifth grade currently, and you can see those numbers. And then the other grade levels have a one-way program. And you can see their, their totals right there, including their zone information. Again, those non-LEAP are students who have met exit criteria and that are allowed to remain in the program. For summary purposes, we put a big box around K3 because that's our most important discussion tonight. But you can see that there are 46 students currently qualified for bilingual services at Cannon. Seven of those are zoned elsewhere, making that total for Cannon bilingual students zoned to Cannon at 39 and served by four teachers. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shiver for the next section.
Thank you, Dr. Cox, and hope that you paid attention to all of the vocabulary and acronyms. We will have a quick assessment at the end. It's necessary to build that background because in order to understand the recommendation that we're making tonight and the evaluation of our program, having an understanding of the program and what all of those acronyms mean are very important. To begin with, I want to share just an overall enrollment number with you. I believe you see these weekly when you see our campus reports. Cannon currently has a total of 554 students. Silver Lake has a total of 480 students. And Timberline has a total of 634 students. Given the last number, I actually heard before we came into the workshop, we've got a new enrollment. So that is truly not the most up-to-date enrollment number. But we're going to talk about student enrollment because this is really an area that we have worked to analyze. Every year, student enrollment is important for so many reasons. It is important to know and understand, in particular with our LEAP learners, that qualify for a bilingual program and how we need to staff for that, which staffing will be our next topic. So our student enrollment definitely drives knowing and understanding what students are eligible for bilingual service and the teachers that we need. In addition to this, we also have the lottery that students either Spanish native language or English native language may enter the dual language program through the lottery. So we'll talk about that also. Because our recommendation, yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. What were the numbers again for Cannon and Silver Lake?
A Cannon, 554. Silver Lake, 480.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, are, we are going to dive into very specifically the LEAP population at Cannon. I think that's very instrumental in the recommendation that we have. So we're going to talk about various avenues of what we know about our Cannon zone. On this slide, what you see is really representing a five-year history of LEAP enrollment zoned to each of the campuses. You see the range of LEAP learners that we've had at Cannon. In particular, the low is this year, which is 100. And you may already be thinking, because you paid such close attention, I didn't see a 100 on any of the other slides. An interesting thing about the coding in PIMS, bilingual, LEAP, non-LEAP. There is also the possibility that a parent may deny bilingual services, which mean they count in our LEAP count, but they may not count in our bilingual count. And then they would also show up in our ESL count, which is one we didn't talk about, except for ESL certification. So it is very difficult to get. So it is very difficult to get numbers to match because of all the acronyms and the different criteria for qualifying to be coded in different ways. Then, when we have a change in coding, such as from LEAP to EL, it becomes even more challenging. But I will explain a little bit of that difference in the numbers as we go along. One other point on that number of one hundred, that captures any student that enrolled for any amount of time all year. Our actual number right now is eighty-four in total numbers on the Canon. At Timberline, you're going to see our highest representation at the elementary, ranging as high as four hundred one with three hundred forty-six. Timberline does fluctuate quite a bit each year. We see it go up or down twenty students and that's really on a, on a good year. We have seen years where they had some zoning changes or changes to rent in the area. And we saw a change in student population up to a total of one hundred over the whole campus. And then Silver Lake really is the campus that stays pretty consistent or most consistent in their LEAP enrollment over the last five years. There are many factors that contribute to these changes. I will point out that the LEAP percentage of students at Canon right now, it represents seven percent of the overall population of Canon. Additionally, in the Canon zone, very specifically focused on the LEAP student enrollment. As you saw from the overview of the student enrollment at Timberline, we have five students that are attending Timberline, but they are zoned to Canon and they're participating in the two-way dual program. So every child has their own individual story. They may have applied in the lottery as a kindergartner to be in the two-way dual program. They may have originally lived in the Timberline zone, moved to the Canon zone, but requested to stay. Just giving you that as the background. Then in the Silver Lake zone, we currently have nineteen students that are zoned to Canon that have chosen to attend Silver Lake for various reasons. They are participating in the two-way dual program. At Canon, in the Canon zone, so these are students that attend Canon, are zoned to Canon and also LEAP. We have fifty-one students and that's in that K-four range that we're focusing on. You're also thinking, I've not seen this number fifty-one anywhere yet. It's complicated and complex. The fifty-one, and you will receive a copy of this presentation in your board update tomorrow. And so you'll be able to go back and reference that. The fifty-one, if we look at the Canon numbers, and I'm in the, let's just say kindergarten, there are thirteen LEAP. If I take out the two non-LEAP, remember they can participate, but they're not eligible. And then I take, remove the student that's zoned to Bear Creek and the student that is here on a transfer as an employee, child of an employee. That's four, so thirteen minus four is nine. That's the number I'm counting from kindergarten. If I do that in each grade level, kinder through fourth, that is where I have that total of fifty-one in kinder through fourth. So what this tells us is our parents are actually speaking to us and telling us they really value the opportunity to be in two-way dual. If you look at the overall numbers, twenty-four of the seventy-five students zoned to Canon in grades K through four, that's thirty percent of those students are going to either Silver Lake or Timberline with the remaining staying at Canon. On the next slide, we do not currently have pre-K at Canon. We offer pre-K at nine of our campuses. Silver Lake, if you are in the Canon zone and you qualify for pre-K, Silver Lake is the campus that you would go to. When you see the three-year history here of giving you the history of the number of students that attend pre-K at Silver Lake, but are actually Canon zone students. We have seen that whenever the students enter at Silver Lake, they often call toward the end of the year and say, we love Silver Lake, can we stay here? Because we have really been working to try to keep our bilingual population at Canon. We have often said, your program is at Canon. However, some of the families have applied to stay at Silver Lake through the lottery in the dual language program. That's what you see in the second line. If you see a number that is marked as inactive, that means that they are no longer enrolled in GCIC, but they were here as a pre-K student. So what I want to demonstrate here is, let's take for instance, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we had a pre-K class of seventeen zoned to Canon. And now that cohort is in first grade and we have nine students attending Canon. Just showing you the decline in numbers that we've seen for our students that are LEAP in the bilingual program in the Canon zone. At the end of pre-K, students that are attending a campus that is not their zoned campus may, they are told that you go to your home campus for kindergarten to register. They do have the option to apply for a special program through the lottery, STEM or dual language. And they also have the option to fill out a transfer request form. Part of looking into the, our students and their achievement and their success is really tracking them after they leave the elementary. How do they do in the dual language program, in the STEM program? Again, specifically focusing on the Canon cohort. So what I'm showing you on this graph are students that completed Canon in the fifth grade, identified as a LEAP student. So in the first column, these are the students that were fifth graders at Canon in nineteen twenty. They are now sixth graders at GMS. That cohort had twenty-three at the end of fifth grade. Of those twenty-three students, eight of them have continued at GMS in both dual and STEM. Seven of those twenty-three are only participating in dual and eight are inactive. inactive may be a student that has withdrawn from GCIC. It may be a student that is going to a different middle school, therefore not participating in dual or STEM. Or a student that is still at GMS but not participating in either program, dual or STEM. So you can see and track that cohort as they leave Canon. What ultimately, what choices they are making regarding their programming in consideration of dual and STEM. Some key points that I want to focus on as we wrap up this part of the conversation about student enrollment and that is so crystal clear. One, we want to focus on student success. How are our students doing? When, in our board update, we are going to provide some additional information that is related to student achievement of some of the student groups that we're talking about. Student opportunity, we would love for our students to be able to participate in all programs. We know and you know that there are times that our students and parents have to make a choice because we're not able to schedule and be in all of the offerings that we offer here in GCIC. Beginning of year challenges, because we do have a mobile population and it is somewhat unpredictable from year to year. The beginning of each year, staffing our dual language program and making sure we get students placed in the right classes is very challenging. They have to go through the process of assessment at the lack to determine what that program they're eligible for. Also want to spend a little time pointing out that this is a decline in student enrollment in the Canon zone that we've been watching. Some of our efforts included, that Dr. Cox talked about, is making changes to offer two-way and one-way in addition to the traditional two-way with the two teachers and our students partnered together. In addition to that, when our students are leaving pre-K and going into kinder, we have attempted to recruit bilingual students to leave their home campus and go to Canon so that they can be in the dual program and participate in STEM. An example is, in August of two thousand nineteen, there were thirty-seven phone calls made to students that were leaving pre-K to share information with them about the STEM program at Canon and offered them the ability to transfer to Canon to participate in the STEM program and dual language. Of those thirty-seven phone calls, we were not able to recruit any of our families to make that change to Canon. We've, we're in our third year of trying to do that in order to build up that bilingual class that we have at Canon. Now staffing. Staffing is pretty complex and complicated when we are talking about the dual language program. We have to consider the certifications and qualifications of the teacher. What language can you teach in and instruct in? What are you certified to teach in? And then whether or not we have the students to match with the teacher of the right qualifications, either in the Spanish side, English side, or a two-way program where the teacher is teaching the mixed group of kids and both languages. As you look at the dual language historical staffing, you're going to notice that the staffing has stayed pretty consistent for Timberline and Silver Lake for the past five years. Our staffing for dual language looks a little different than our staffing for our other elementary campuses or elementary campuses, kinder through fourth grade, that we follow the staffing ratio provided by the state of twenty-two to one. If we have more than twenty-two students, we must consider adding a teacher. If we have students that do not make that class, we sometimes have to shuffle a teacher or we don't hire a position. In dual language, we are limited by matching the staff to the needs of the students based on their language of instruction and the program they qualify for. So ultimately, as we staff our dual language program, they've been pretty exempt really from trying to follow that twenty-two to one because it's really too complex to do that. The staffing that we do in the spring, basically, we look at the spring enrollment and that's how we staff. And then we monitor it through the summer and we cross our fingers in August as we wait on our new students to show up at the Language Assessment Center and see if we're able to match the student need to the staffing. Some things to think about and consider with staffing. We have each year for the past, I'll say, three years for sure, had unfilled positions in our bilingual program. For instance, we went into this year with two unfilled positions at Timberline, an unfilled position at Silver Lake. And at the beginning of the year, we had a dual language party at Canon in which we, on index cards, laid out all of our students, looked at the teachers that we had between Silver Lake, Canon and Timberline. And the week before school started, we shuffled staff in order to match staff to the students that we had enrolled. In order to accommodate the positions that we were not able to fill. Also, we have had a bilingual literacy intervention position open at Canon all year that we've not been able to fill. These are positions that are unique, that are often difficult. Thing about long-term substitutes, another instance that gives some insight into how are we best serving our kids? Last year, we had a teacher that left the district in the fall semester and we were not able to secure a long-term substitute that was bilingual certified. So we had a group of students that while we feel had a highly qualified substitute, we did have to send letters to that group of students that they did not have that, the teacher did not have that bilingual certification. Long-term substitutes are even more challenging this year for a class that does not require any form of special certification. We have mentioned the adjustments that we've tried to make to assist us with staffing, like having the one-way class or the two-way class where we have one teacher teaching a mixed cohort of students. And I think I've talked at length about the complexity of trying to staff that. So our key points in staffing, really, whenever we have these types of challenges regarding staffing, there are some concerns about how we're able to implement the program with a high level of quality and fidelity. In addition, when we have differences in our students and teacher ratios, we also notice that that can translate into a difference in how we're able to operate instructionally. As a reference point to the staffing that I've talked about, if we staff, could staff our bilingual program, our dual language program the same manner we staff our other program, elementary programs, twenty-two to one. Over the last five years, we would have nine to thirteen additional teachers in our dual language program. Also, on the ratio side, if we were able to evenly spread out our dual language students over the last five years, the ratio of students to teacher would be about fifteen. We're not able to place our students in classes in that manner. So our ratio of students, even this year, varies from a low number of five to a high number of twenty-six students in a classroom. So those variances that are created do have an impact on the instructional program and the success of our students. We have, it is a waiver that you have acted on as a board in that particular class. And when we use, may have an aide, if we have the capacity to have that paraprofessional added, we have added one to that class. It really depends on the needs of the students in each instance that we evaluate it. This year, we've had an additional challenge regarding the student enrollment. We have had staffing challenges not, not related to COVID where we have positions that are very difficult to fill. We may fill at the last minute approaching the school year or have had positions go unfilled before. When, when we look at staffing the elementary, we do not have the same challenges in staffing our elementary campuses in K through five as we do, as we're highlighting here with our bilingual program. The applicants that we receive, their availability is very different than our applicants for an elementary position that's not in our dual program. So it is very different and I agree, we do have areas across the district that are hard to fill and challenging. But there is a very significant difference in filling our elementary teaching positions for our dual program versus non-dual program. We shared a lot of background information with you, what is the dual language program, a lot of numbers to kind of let you know where we currently stand with our campuses and enrollment, some history of student enrollment and information about staffing. We have a recommendation based on having monitored the dual language program every year. That is a task that we're always doing and looking for ways to improve our programs. The recommendation for the dual language program is to rezone our LEAP students that qualify for bilingual service from the Canon zone to attend Silver Lake Elementary, beginning in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. A review of numbers, what that ultimately means, there are thirty-nine students currently enrolled, kindergarten to third grade, that will be in first grade to fourth grade next year that are LEAP zoned to Canon. So the recommendation would mean we would personally and individually contact those families about that change to Silver Lake. There are already fourteen pre-K students that are zoned to Canon, but they are attending pre-K at Silver Lake already and they would continue at Silver Lake. The recommendation includes that we be considerate of our students that are in fifth grade to not make this change and we keep our dual language program at Canon for the following school year, which would include and serve the twenty-three students that are currently there. We have not, this is a very difficult recommendation to make, many challenges to it. We've tried different things with staffing, different arrangements of our two-way, one-way, two-way mixed cohort, we've tried recruiting and we feel like we are at the point that we need to look at this differently with this recommendation that we're bringing forward. We're continuing to monitor and look at our options. We're continuing to monitor and look at our options. Further considerations for this recommendation are that all students that are zoned to Silverlake do feed into Grapevine Middle. Therefore, all of our students would have the opportunity moving into the middle school to participate in STEM. Students that do not enter the dual language program in elementary do not have an opportunity to join the dual language program later in their school. So they can't join dual language, say, in middle school the way they can join STEM in middle school. Also, the recommendation would have some considerations on, as we are approaching the season where we have the lottery for our special programs, where we are making available to our community how many dual seats we might have available at Timberline and Silverlake. That's an important thing for us, or the lottery at Cannon for STEM. We do believe that there are quite a few potential benefits to this recommendation. We are looking for increased student participation where we can hopefully draw in and offer more of the two-way with the cohorts of students, English and Spanish, working collaboratively together to learn the two languages. The fidelity of service and program across campuses. Because as you saw on the description of each campus, it looks different at Timberline, Cannon, and Silverlake. And even though we have the same curriculum and the same fifty-fifty model, it is hard to bring consistency when the class arrangements look so different. Would also allow for streamlined services and support to two campuses as opposed to three and reduce some of our hiring challenges that we are facing. We met with our dual language teachers last week and asked for some feedback regarding information that we've shared and the recommendation that we've made. Some, this is a summary paraphrasing of some of those comments. Some of the benefits that were mentioned, the continuity of being at a campus from pre-K to five. A larger community of dual students, several people spoke to this over the concern of, we have very small cohorts of students at Cannon right now and being able to be in a larger community that is integrated into the campus was named several times as a benefit. Greater capacity on the two-way, teacher quality. And one that was really emphasized is making larger teacher teams at Silverlake so that they have the opportunity to plan, collaborate, support, and grow with each other. Some of the concerns presented, and I'll tell you that number one is really the part about this that's difficult. It's, some parents will have to have the choice about in the elementary, do we pursue dual language or do we stay at Cannon for STEM? That, the concern was that it was a business approach about our staffing, that it would change the diversity at Cannon. And a concern which was to rezone other campuses to Cannon. And you will be able to see when you have it in front of you, the, the number of students that are attending Timberline from other campuses is not large enough to make up the classes at Cannon if we were to consider that. So that would not be something that would really fully address our concerns. As I mentioned, we will provide a copy of the presentation along with additional student data for your review and the board update. And we will consider, continue to receive feedback for consideration, continue to review data and develop a communication plan on updates for our staff and parents as the steps are determined to move forward.
Do we have any questions, Jorge?
How we talk to parents about this?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How we talk to parents about this?
We have not visited with parents. One of the steps that would come next is for us to have individual conversations with our parents.
So do you see the main issue would be that that decision between STEM and dual? Because if, when you won't be able to have a STEM experience if you, if you leave Cannon. So you, you're saying that there, I guess a backup for us is to tell them that you, you can do a STEM at GMS when you transfer in sixth, sixth grade.
They would have the opportunity to join STEM at the middle school level, but would not have that same opportunity to join a dual language program.
And then you definitely will significantly reduce the diversity of the STEM program because we're moving all these students into Silverlake.
That's really an unknown, but it is an area of data that we're going to provide for you where we're going to show you the number of students that are currently identified as bilingual and Hispanic. And you'll be able to see what impact that would have on the campus from the data that we're going to share in the board update.
Could you put back the Cannon slide with the three or four columns?
Are you?
The first one, the previous one that you had. The different grades.
One more.
Yeah, one more.
That one.
So these thirty-nine kids are coming off this table. You said there's thirty-nine kids that will be affected by this decision?
Yes. So if you look at the students beginning in the kindergarten line to the third grade line, because fourth graders will be fifth graders next year, we're recommending they remain at Cannon. Take out any students that are not actually zoned to Cannon. That, that's the, the number that we shared with you, the thirty-nine. Now, the students that are participating in dual language that are zoned to another campus will still have the, to continue in the dual language program, there will be parents who are contacting, but they're not Cannon-zoned parents. So that thirty-nine is coming from the Cannon numbers that are represented in the third column minus any non-LET students. Because remember, they really could exit from the program, but they're able to stay because of our dual language program.
Will you give them the option to go to Silverlake?
Yes, yes. They'll have the option to, to go to Silverlake. And what's not represented in here, we do already have some parents that have denied bilingual services at Cannon. And so they are not in the dual classes. They are represented in the other sections of classes at Cannon.
So you're removing, you had the thirteen, thirteen, nine, and eleven on column three. You're removing the, the ones in red and you're removing the zoning for
Yes.
to give us a thirty-nine.
Yes.
But that doesn't mean that those parents are not affected.
No, it does not. The, the purpose in sharing that information with you specifically about LET is the demonstration that our LET students living in the Cannon zone, that number in student enrollment has continued to decline. So that's why we pulled that out to show that the, really the structure of that zone has been changing over the course of years, that we do not have the same numbers that we have had in the past.
So somebody, like, I'm just going to put an example of those four kids in red on, in third grade. That basically means that the parents didn't want them to go to the old English program. They wanted them to stay in an English-Spanish program because they want their kids to learn Spanish. Am I, is that, am I?
That is one example of why they may still be participating in that. As every child has an individual story on why they're in that class, we do a lot of recruitment to participate in dual language. So it may not be that the parent pursued their student staying, but it might have been at the recommendation of the teachers and staff and the parents agreed to it. So there's, I can't really speak to say that's one hundred percent certain for all of those. They have individual stories about why they've remained.
So we, we don't have a lot of kids that we're talking about, thirty-nine kids for, I guess, first, second, and third? Is that what, with first, second, and third, and fourth?
Yes. So it, it's hard to talk about because they're in kinder through third now, but they're going to roll up.
So, so do we know how many, how many teachers are we, I'm just going to say, use the word saving, like, by doing this versus?
That's, that's a great question. I wish I had an answer. It's very complex. It is not going to be as easy as by making this change, we're saving six FTEs. Because of some of the things we demonstrated with student enrollment and how the classes balance at Silverlake. In addition, the classes at Cannon, are they continuing? So there's, there's a lot of questions and complexity to that. So I do want to emphasize, no part of this recommendation can I say we're going to lower our FTEs for our dual language program by a specific number. Because there are so many factors into that, the unpredictable nature of our enrollment being the biggest answer in that. What I will say is that we have, we've seen some decline in both Silverlake and Cannon zones of our bilingual learners. And that can be attributed to several factors in the community. The regentrification that we're seeing happen in the neighborhoods. In addition, we are also seeing that the, there are different developments that are coming in which are changing the type of housing available for families. And we do, those are things that are not in our control that affect the student enrollment each and every year.
Can you go back to your last, I think that you have a slide on benefits at the end? So, I mean, the achievement is not a benefit they're achieving now, right? When you talk about increased student participation and achievement in the dual language program.
We do.
I understand, a participation, you're getting groups that are bigger. But achievement, what does that really mean? Like, are, are kids are going to do better because they go to Silverlake? Or am I maybe misunderstanding what you're trying to say?
When we're able to streamline our support that we give to our teachers and the variance of how we're delivering instruction, that will increase the fidelity of the program and the implementation, which can be tied to student achievement. We will share with you through the board update some of our student achievement data so that you are going to be able to see, are there some differences? There are certainly, there's certainly potential to increase our student achievement. So we see that being really several variables that can attribute to making this change and recommendation would allow us and offer additional support to our teachers. More collaboration for teacher groups and teacher teams at Silverlake. In addition, when we're able to implement the program with a higher level of fidelity, that direct tie to student achievement.
Dr. Ryan, you're not, I mean, this is not a, this is not an agenda item for action. But, I mean, I do under, I mean, definitely I would like to see the number of teachers at some point that we, but we can say, but my, my concern about this is one about LEED two-point-oh. And about the fact that we're trying to offer programs to all these different groups, especially groups that for whatever reason have, have not been able to, to take advantage of these programs. And we're doing this, which doesn't look to be, to be matching what we're trying to accomplish in LEED two-point-oh. Because we're, we're removing a group from a program like Cannon and not only the fact that the school is amazing, you know, it's a new school and all that, but we're removing them, we're not really giving the option to them to stay because they, they might need the, the Spanish-English learning, you know, that they require. So that's kind of my concern. Like, we are talking only two-point-oh equity and offerings, but then we're doing this without really understanding or knowing how many teachers that we're actually going to be saving. I do understand the other areas that benefit the teachers and the program, having more kids together, teachers collaborating and all that, but I'm just a little concerned that, that we are removing pretty, in my, in my opinion, a pretty incredible benefit for students to be in STEM at the elementary level. Because I don't see that the, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I just don't see that the quality of the STEM program at GMS compares to the one at, at Cannon. I mean, that's kind of my opinion based on what I know about those programs. And I'm just a little concerned that we will be doing that to these students. So I would definitely would love to hear what parents have to say about this. Because, I mean, that, that would be interesting to, to know. That's kind of, that's kind of my concern.
You know, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent on that, Jorge. You said you met with the teachers at Cannon?
We met with the dual language.
And their thoughts?
They certainly have a lot of concerns. And their feedback definitely is represented in some of those concerns that were shared. They absolutely value the aspect of STEM and the students having the opportunity to have that. They have through, not necessarily in that meeting, but there can sometimes be a pull between programs. So in order to implement the curriculum into languages and integrate STEM, that's very challenging. Not that they're not up for the challenge. But while they have concerns, and I hear Jorge on the aspect of our LEED two-point-oh goals, there are actually conflicting barriers. And we have inequities, inequities in student-teacher ratios. But yet, we're trying to offer a program that benefits our students. So there are things that are actually conflicting with one another, which makes this a very difficult conversation and challenge. Our first goal was to try to recruit students to Cannon. And we have been doing that and have not been successful in really filling that class in order to secure the dual language to stay there.
So have you thought about forcing the Silverlake program into Cannon so that you have to go to Cannon? I mean, that's just enough, I'm just, I just.
If you look at the, the numbers, because of the numbers of students that are at, currently at Silverlake, we've got more than twice as many students participating at Silverlake. So there's actually not the capacity at Cannon to take on all of the dual language program at Cannon.
Do, do we have, I mean, just, I don't know the numbers. I should, if I go to my reports. Do we have a lot of? What, do you know that the percentage of non-Cannon students in STEM at GMS? Is that pretty high? Was mostly Cannon students plus a little bit more from?
We can get that information. I do not.
You don't know? Okay. I just was wondering how attractive is it for non-Cannon? Because we're saying that you will have that option at, in sixth grade.
That is one of the reasons why we brought forward the data of the number of Cannon students, bilingual Cannon students that are continuing in STEM once they get to GMS. Because we felt that that was valuable input as well.
Yeah, but, but for me, it's more of a, how attractive is the GMS program for non-Cannon students? Because these kids will become non-Cannon students at Silverlake. How, how popular is that option? Is it like maybe not that many or a lot of people do it? That will, like, if it's a lot of people do it, then that means that, yeah, that's an option because people really want it, but if nobody does it, then it's like not really an option for them.
And then I guess my next question on that then, and how much are we really working with our parents for them to understand how important it is for their child to go into GMS to continue with that STEM? I mean, here we've got our families that have difficulty understanding and they're not speaking the same language. I mean, are we, are we visiting with the families, explaining to them the importance of them continuing? Instead of just saying, they didn't want to do it, we made a phone call. I just, oh, this, I'm glad you're presenting this to us tonight, but there's a lot of concerns here for me right now for these families. So.
Do you mind putting back the, you have that table with the Cannon and what they do at GMS, just to kind of look at it? Okay, so here you have twenty-three kids, fifteen, eight, eight stayed on STEM, seven didn't, and eight left. Or are it somewhere else? Is that kind of what we? Is that kind of what we're talking about? They're not in STEM or dual?
Correct.
Okay. So you see, quite a bit of a drop off, do we know why?
I can't provide that information tonight.
Okay. So these kids were all in STEM, they're in Canon, 23?
Were you talking about the active ones?
No, I'm talking about all of them, like, you know, you have only eight kids that were in STEM and they're not. I mean, they're, they're, they were in STEM, only eight stayed in STEM, most of them left STEM. Does that mean that they didn't like STEM at Canon? Or they don't like what that was offered at GMS? Those are really good questions to, to make a decision, I think. Because that will tell us something is an issue somewhere that we could fix, and then the whole decision will be completely different for the parents, I'm thinking.
Well, and Jorge, it looks like maybe they dropped STEM, but they stuck with dual.
When a student is in the, not in two-way dual. Well, Canon does, they only have two-way, right? Do they have both two-way and one-way? So the one-way kids, when they go to GMS, what do they get?
Any student who completes our dual language program successfully in elementary can continue with advanced Spanish courses in our dual program at, it exists at Cross Timbers and at Greatvine Middle. So regardless of one-way, two-way, they received 50/50 content and are able to continue in Spanish 2 pre-AP at the sixth grade level. The state allows us to coop their Spanish 1 credit based on their experiences in, in elementary. So they do pre-AP, which will soon be advanced, sixth grade Spanish, seventh grade Spanish 3, and then AP Spanish 4 in eighth grade. Yes, sir.
And then they take the, the second IP in ninth grade, if they want.
If they want, we prefer they wait till their sophomore year to not overload a ninth grader with that Spanish 5 lit course just because of the complexity of the literature. But certainly they have that option. We recommend a culture class that's 100% taught in Spanish at ninth grade, and then that lit class as sophomores.
Okay, thank you.
Becky, did you have questions? I know you had sent me.
Yeah, I, I do have some questions and, and some concerns. So even just looking at the number of teachers that dropped off from Silver Lake, that was four or five, and we've got, what, seven at Canon? I mean, I'm just not seeing, are, are we planning to move the teachers from Canon over to Silver Lake? Why would we not maybe just consider rolling up the classes? Not just fifth grade, but, or those in, you know, the rising fifth graders. But why, if, if this is truly this much of an issue, why not just roll up the, the classes as they go along? I'm wondering about transportation for all of these students. And I know we asked every time, we've had a waiver before us about the number of students and if we were actually utilizing any of the waivers. And I don't recall us being told that there was a class anywhere with 26. Is that a fifth grade class? And so they're actually, well, which, which class is 26 in it?
It's a fourth grade class with, current number's 25.
And it's at Canon?
At Canon, yes.
So again, I mean, I'm throwing out some questions there. What, what would we be doing with current staff? What are we gonna do about transportation? And I was, maybe we need to go back to one of the very first slides that talked about which students are zoned for where. So there is not, am I not seeing this correctly? Is there not a single student at Canon in this program who had lotteryed in or transferred in from Colville Elementary, Bransford, OC Taylor, Glenn Hope, or all of those at Timberline? How, how does that work? And I, and I guess too, probably one of my biggest concerns is echoing some things that Jorge said about the fact that, you know, we're offering, this is a, this is a unique opportunity. And not a lot of schools provide dual language STEM. And I, I think that's a, a huge benefit. And again, looking at the makeup of the classes there at Canon, I am wondering if, rather than just relying on that incoming kindergarten, pre-K to kindergarten class, do other, do other families across the district know that there is actually some capacity here? Because I know every year I hear, oh my gosh, you know, should we put in for the lottery? You know, how many people put in for it? Does anybody ever get it, blah, blah, blah? And I'm wondering, you know, if we're marketing this to our own families across the district? And then too, I, I know that the attendance zone for Canon is, has changed somewhat dramatically. But have we looked at the demographers report for what we think may be happening, you know, in another five to seven years in the Canon zone? Does, does the attendance there continue to drop? Or, you know, are we possibly throwing out a program that would continue to actually still have some draw for families coming into that attendance zone?
Is that a question or is that a comment?
I do have a question, I mean, what are we, what about the current staff? What are we gonna do about transportation? Why don't we just roll, roll up the, the classes as they go along? And this, the last part was a comment, what are we going to do? I mean, I, I think, I'm concerned about us losing a unique program that, of, of the dual language plus STEM options.
I believe the first question was related to the staff and shared specifically with the Canon staff is that, at this point, as we shared, this is a recommendation that we're still gathering input, data, and feedback. So there certainly aren't any final decisions. If it were to move forward, each individual staff member would have an opportunity to meet and talk about their career goals, look at what openings were across our district, whether or not they wanted to remain at Canon or they wanted to stay in a dual language program. So those would be individual conversations. Ultimately, for next school year, if this were to go forward, we're talking about the five staff members, because we would remain with the fourth graders that will be fifth graders. So those decisions would be made on an individual basis. Transportation for the bilingual program, if not offered at a zoned campus, would be provided when looking at the students that are currently attending Canon. Most, if not all of them, are already in our transportation system because of where they are located in Canon. So they would still have bus transportation to Silver Lake. Trying to think of the third question. I'm sorry, I did not have.
That's okay. I was also wondering what our demographic projections are, and why, or if, how much consideration was given towards just rolling the program up? So in other words, next year it's not offered at kindergarten and then, you know, and on up. So just let them all phase out rather than only the fifth graders.
So the demographers' projections do not necessarily get into a program a student may qualify for. We are seeing that the Canon zone really at this point is not projected to grow immensely. But it doesn't give us information about what program they may qualify for. What we have to really base some of that information on is information that we get really through the city council and zoning, and where there may be changes coming in housing available, changes to developments. So those are certainly things that have been a part of us looking at our demographer reports when we know that housing is being built, what type of housing. In addition, housing that may change. We have a little bit of that, that's up for question, both in the Silver Lake zone and the Canon zone. So considering, we can't completely answer the question of what will happen with the enrollment, yes, we do look at those demographer reports for our staffing. In order to make those decisions, it doesn't help as much in the bilingual program as it does with our overall elementary programs. And for the consideration of rolling up, that is what we did when we phased out the two-way dual at Canon. And part of that consideration is that since we began our pre-K program at Silver Lake, and our Canon zone students are attending pre-K at Silver Lake, the number of phone calls that we get each year from the parents that their child's first experience has been at Silver Lake, they've come to love the community and the campus, they have asked informally to transfer. Because we have been trying to keep the dual language program going at Canon, those have been really discouraged to stay at Canon, to be in STEM in the dual language program. Some have gone forward and applied for the lottery for the dual language and remained because they already had a sibling there. So that's really our basis of information that we have on. If we know that they've been asking for the past three years, we have considered that possibly some of those families may not actually be adverse to making that change to Silver Lake. We're not going to know that until we have the individual conversations. Because of the manageable number of students to make personal phone calls and have personal conversations, that's really our preferred method to communicate and share and get feedback from our parents on this particular topic, rather than attempt to send something home in, in, in their native language or have some type of parent meeting. Because we feel like we're able to really share the information and address individual questions when we have those individual conversations. So if we were to move forward, that's, we would gather that information as we had those conversations. That would also give us additional information on projecting our staffing changes. If families express that they did desire to go to Silver Lake, or if they express that they wanted to stay at Canon, we would be collecting that information as we have the phone calls in order to inform us for the final decision.
So if I could, clearly, we don't have anything on the table tonight, no decisions tonight. We do appreciate the feedback. We appreciate the passion in which people have provided the feedback. We're hearing you. We will continue to work with our teachers, continue to work with parents. I do appreciate the background and the work and the thinking that has gotten us to this point. These are tough decisions, and we're not there yet. And it's clear we're not there yet. So it's okay, we'll, we'll keep working on it. We'll get back and, and we'll continue to update the board with, with good information. And we, we heard your questions, and we're gonna try to find every answer to the questions that you have as we move forward. And we don't have a timeline for bringing it back to the board at this point.
That's what I was just gonna ask. Could we have, before it goes on as a recommendation, could we have another update?
Before it comes up as a recommendation, we will have another update. We want you to feel good about the move. We want our parents and our teachers to feel good about it. And if, you know, so that's, that's kind of where we'll be. We're not, we're not, this is a no surprises kind of thing. We wanted to make sure that you had the information to be able to, to move forward with. I know we've had meetings with teachers, gonna continue. I know Ms. Garrett has a meeting tomorrow with, with teachers as well. So we'll continue to communicate with folks and, and gather feedback about how to move forward.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Oh, Lisa, I just wanna, just thank you for the amount of detail in the presentation. That's really good, thank you so much. That created a lot of questions though, but at least it's nice to have it all there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. They've really worked hard, this is, this is not easy. And the recommendations aren't easy, coming to the, to the conclusions aren't easy. And, and, you know, we're trying to solve a problem. And we're trying to do it in the best way possible. But sometimes, sometimes these aren't easy, easy conversations. So I appreciate the board, your thinking, and I appreciate your, your questions, and we'll, we'll continue to work on.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan. We are gonna go into regular session, it's 7:20. I'm gonna ask for a five-minute break. Before we do that, is that okay with everyone?
Thank you all.
So we'll take at seven, it's 7:20, if we could just take a quick break and get back. So at this time, at 7:30, we are back in regular session. All trustees are present in person with the exception of Becky, trustee Becky St. John is with us virtually. So all trustees are present. So at this time, the Grapevine Collierville Independent School District Board of Trustees and Central Administration, we will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the continued successes of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. Now we will have the U.S. and Texas pledges. And tonight, we are honored to have students from Grapevine Middle School. They're going to join us to lead the pledges. They will proudly represent their school by leading the U.S. pledge, followed by the Texas pledge, and then share thoughts on how they're progressing towards the Portrait of a Graduate. So leading the U.S. and Texas pledge for us tonight is Marcus Ashley. And I see is that Marcus there? So Marcus is here. And after the pledges, they will begin their Portrait of a Graduate presentation. Marcus, you can begin when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Marcus Ashley, and I'm a seventh grader from GMS. And please stand for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Hi, can I have presenter rights so I can show our slides? Okay. So first of all, hi, my name is Lindsay Cato. I teach engineering to sixth through eighth graders, and I am blessed to work at Grapevine Middle School, which is unarguably, undeniably, the best school in the best district, in the best state, and far beyond. As many of you know or don't know, GMS has recently been named a school transforming learning. We're really, really proud of that. And so, you know, if you don't know, I just wanted to remind you. So my goal as an engineering teacher is to have the kids learn to exemplify the GCISD Portrait of a Graduate attributes. I do hope to instill in them both these soft skills like empathy and their interpersonal skills, as well as hard skills like knowledge of every sense that are available to mankind, and even an introductory knowledge to the dangers and benefits of artificial intelligence. Our seventh graders' culminating project for the first semester is what we affectionately called the Pony Programed Parade. It was perfect for meeting the goals I mentioned in many, many ways, but it also happened to collide with the National Hour of Code, which was really quite serendipitous if you ask me. For this project, the students were asked to build a robot, design and build a parade float, and program the robot to carry the float on a specific route. However, I could just talk about this forever, but there's no one better to explain how this project required our students to be self-regulated than our ponies themselves. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Hi, my name is Geneva McCray. I'm in seventh grade. I hope to become, I hope to go to the Naval Academy, become a pilot in the Navy, an aerospace engineer, and possibly an astronaut when I'm an adult. I'm an adult. I chose engineering as an elective because I really like constructing and coding robots and getting to build and do design challenges. So in this project, we built a robot using Legos and a float for the robot to pull out of cardboard. During this project, we had a set of expectations to follow in order to work with these materials. As you can see on the side, this is mine. It was inspired, this project was inspired by the Thanksgiving Day Parade. We made ours out of a sled with a hat on it, and it went across the room and we got to show our winter spirits. So in order to complete this project over ti, on time, we had to be self-regulated. We were expected to be able to get along with whoever we had to be in a group with and execute the goal of the project by problem solving. The most challenging part of this project was the improving part, where we had to problem solve to make sure our float did what was required and so the robot could pull it. So next time, I definitely would like to see the robot and what it can do so I can make sure that I can plan my robot and plan my float out with the engineering design process, which is, which is imagining, planning, creating, testing, and improving. And in the improving stage was the most complicated because we had to improve the float so it could go across the room. I really enjoyed this project and thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Marcus Ashley, and I'm in seventh grade. And for this project, as you can see on the right there, we built a turkey that was hiding inside of a present with snow surrounded by it and lots of Christmas lights that aren't lit up in the picture, but we turned them on when we drove the robot across the room. And in order to get this project done concisely and quickly, but with efficiency, we, all the members of our group had to be self-regulated. And I think one way that I was self-regulated was I made sure that the group members in our group didn't play around and that we were always on task and doing our work. And I think the most challenging aspect of this project was probably the coding because we had to code the robot based on the dimensions of the hallways and all the different little bumps in the floor. And we had to base it on the way the robot, just like how it moved according to all the different bumps. And we had to reprogram our robot multiple times to get it to behave the way we wanted to, but in the end, it all worked out. So thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Joya Jardus. I am in seventh grade. So as, so when I am an adult, I want to be an engineer because I love engineering and I think I'm creative. Plus, I've always wanted to be one. So I made my float a Christmas tree and I tried to make it as realistic as I can. I made it as a Christmas tree because it was Christmas, so I thought maybe I can put everything that reminds me of Christmas in a Christmas, in a, in my float. For this project, and I am a remote learner, so being self-regulated was important. I was self-regulated by setting time aside daily to work on it. And every time I worked, I added something I needed to. The most challenging part of this project was time management. And some days, I only had little time to work on the project. That slowed me down a little, but other than that, I found this project easy and fun. Happy board appreciation month.
Well, we're super proud of these guys. They're great. And as you can see, they did a really good job and just, we think they did so amazing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. And how impressive. I would love to have seen those in action, actually moving along. That is quite impressive. And Joya in Geneva and Marcus, are they still with us? Thank you all. Now, hopefully, they, they can hear us. Thank you so much for giving us your time tonight. We really appreciate that. And Dr. Collier and Lindsay, you also, thank you. You are the STEM teacher there. Thank you all for giving, giving us time and, and joining us. Is there anyone else that you'd like to say, give a shout out to? Or is anyone else on? I can't see who's participating, so that's up to you.
We just got our parents and some kids and Dr. Kano, but we really do appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. So at this time, I'd like to turn them, there they are. Oh, that's great. I don't know if she's saying something, but.
Well, she's a former cheer coach, so it looks like she's working on it.
There she is. There you are.
I was cheering the kids on. I'm so proud of them. I'm so proud of them and really love to hear their stories because they were new. I just heard them today. However, I had the opportunity to go and watch them as they were building their projects and then watch the final project. And I think that was so impressive is we were having in-person learners as well as remote learners working together and really having to self-regulate. And I think Joya said that very well in terms of what she had to do as a remote learner. So it was very exciting and I love Mrs. Cato's class. So if you ever have a chance to come and see it, please do.
Thank you. Thank you again, students. Thank you guys and the parents who are up there as well for giving us your time tonight. We really enjoyed it. So at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Ryan for introduction of our recognitions this evening.
Thank you very much. Our first item is our LEAD 2.0 highlight. As we continue to use our strategic plan, LEAD 2.0 to guide our work, we're always, every month, bring a different portion of our district to the meeting to show our trustees and to show our community how our LEAD 2.0 goals are impacting our students. This month, we're going to highlight the positive impact that our special services team is having on students all across GCISD. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Schnatz for the introduction.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So this is take two for our special services program for the LEAD 2.0 highlight. So we just want to thank Dr. Wishman for coming back, but, but really just want to just praise Dr. Wishman and her team for how they offer the customized support for our students and just the impact that those make. And so we're going to learn a little bit about that tonight. So, Dr. Wishman.
I assure you, I do know how to operate a mute button.
I assure you, I do know how to operate a mute button. Yes, trustees, Dr. Ryan, thank you for the opportunity for us to highlight our special services department. Um, we're going to focus on LEAD 2.0 goal one and identifying and basically breaking down the barriers that present from the disabilities that our students have and maximize the opportunity for learning. I'm going to give you just a little bit of a quick history of our program and a snapshot of the numbers. Um, here are our historical percentages of identified students with disabilities in the special ed, uh, department. So we've grown from 7.2% to 9.5, um, which is our current as of this full year snapshot. Um, we have 13 federally defined categories of disabilities that we evaluate students for, and then we program based on that. Just because they have a disability doesn't mean they automatically qualify for services. Because at the bottom of this slide, you'll see that as a result of the disability, they must acquire some kind of specially designed instruction. So some kind of either special education instruction or related services. Here's how our breakdown falls for our students with disabilities this year. Give or take a few kids because they, they come in and out and move, um, frequently. But this is by primary disability only. So this doesn't mean they're not combined with other disabilities. They could be learning disabled and speech impaired or learning disabled and, um, have, um, other health impairment. So this is just pulled by the first disability category. So you can see how ours breakdown, just learning disability is our number one. Out of our 1,321 students, 443 have a learning disability as their primary disability. Um, and you can see the breakdown as it goes through the categories. The one I want to highlight though, just point out to you and explain is speech impairment. Speech impairment tends to fall to secondary, tertiary, or any of the subsequent, um, categories because of it usually is stemming from another disability or is conjoined with that. So we actually have 613 students who receive speech services. So that's what that number means. We are federally required to provide a continuum of services. So this picture shows from least restrictive on the left to the most restrictive on the right. Um, least restrictive would be in the general ed class with some accommodations and inclusion support. Um, gradually going to the right, you see some in-class support. Where special ed staff are coming in to support the students. The third one over is actual pullout to go to a smaller environment with a special ed teacher to provide specially designed modified instruction. And then the most restrictive is our specialized programs. You do have a handout at your place that describes each of our specially designed programs. Um, and there's also a number beside each one that will show you approximately how many kids are in each of those programs. When you look at where are our kids with disabilities, this pie chart will show you in the green that 74% of our 1,321 students spend only 21%, or less than 21% of their instructional day in a special ed service. This could be a student who is in all general ed classes, but is pulled out for speech therapy. So it would include students such as that. Um, but it also includes students who receive in-class support. Um, the orange section is 12% of our 1,321 students. And those students leave the general ed class somewhere between 21% to 60% of the day. So they receive that specialized support. And only 14% of our students with disabilities are in the special ed setting for more than 60% of the day. And those are our specialized programs typically. We don't have a staffing ratio that TA provides that says you have 22 kids and one teacher. Um, sometimes I wish it were that easy, but it's not. Um, we do our staffing based on the individualized needs of our students. One disability doesn't equate another disability. And even if a student is identified with the same disability, their needs may be greater than the other student that has the same disability identified. Um, each of the staff that work in special ed have certifications they must maintain. Uh, many of our staff also have professional licenses to maintain. So they are specifically to type speech therapy or occupational therapy, physical therapy, um, or a school psychologist. There's also this concept of maintenance of effort, which is a federal requirement um, that does impact our funding. We have to monitor it. We must maintain this, the level of funding at the state and local level um, to support students with disabilities from one year to the next. So you can't just take away from the local budget and say, okay, you fund him with federal funds only. You can't do that. Federal, we might allow you to do that. Um, here's a list of our types of personnel within our department. Um, we have instructional staff and then we have federally defined related service supports. So those are our folks who support the instruction that's going on in the classroom. Um, we have about 80 staff in the department that are centralized. Um, they go out to all the campuses and serve the needs. Um, but then we have around 200 or so, uh, special ed teachers and paraprofessionals on the campuses. You have a breakdown of the last five years of the personnel units also at your place. So you can see our growth over time. At this time, we're going to really get to the fun stuff. I'm going to turn it over to Diana Quest. She is one of our RISE teachers, which stands for Reaching Independence Through Structured Education. She is at Dove Elementary and she's going to talk about a really unique program for our kids who need a different way of being taught how to read. So these are students that typically have, um, intellectual disabilities and are accessing the TIC standards, the state standards through prerequisite skills. So we're really filling in those holes to help them continue to progress. I'm going to turn over to Diane.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Dr. Wishman, for inviting me to share about our specialized reading program called EdMark. Um, I've been using EdMark reading for three years with my students. And it's exciting to see those students who were not successful trying to learn to read with phonics be able to give another opportunity. And so this program sort of fills in those gaps and helps them learn to read. EdMark's a sight word based reading program. Uh, it introduces words to students in such a way that they're just quickly able to learn those words and be able to access how to put them together in a sentence and get, gather the meaning. And because that, I'm also able to use them to teach them to write. Um, they can write sentences with these words that they're now familiar with in the EdMark program. Uh, the program, nice thing about it is it does introduce words in all different parts of speech along the way so that quickly they're able to put together, um, sentences with the different parts of speech. And then they're comfortable with those words. So they're more comfortable to write them, which is a really awesome, great thing to see. The picture you're seeing right now on the, are two of my students and they're reading with EdMark. And I so wish you could watch the video because it just, they're precious reading. But the one on the left is now able to read 190 words in the last three years she's learned. And she acquires about two to three words every week. And then the little girl on the right is a non-verbal student. And what's exciting about that is she's using a communication device, as you can see she's pointing to, that has a picture for every single word she's learned to read. And then when she reads the words, she finds the word on the device and reads it to you. And then can push it and it'll read the whole sentence to you. She's now able to read 125 words, which as you can imagine, that device is getting full. So it's really exciting to watch her. Um, as you can tell, I love this program because it just really allows my students to gain a confidence that they didn't have before. Um, and it's so fun to see their excitement, um, as they're learning to read new words. I was telling this Dr. Wishman earlier, one of my students is so cute. He, every time he sits in front of his word, he knows which are his new words. And he goes, that's my new word. And he just gets so excited every week. So it's fun to watch. So thank you for letting me share about a little bit more about this one specialized reading program that we use. And does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for?
I just have a comment. I appreciate you bringing this to us because with this COVID, we're not able to really get on the campuses. And just to be able to see that and understand that is really helpful. I appreciate it. It sounds like a wonderful program.
It is. Thank you for providing it.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. Do you, Jorge?
Do we run any surveys on parents receiving special ed services to see the amount of concerns, you know, are they, you know, satisfied or not? And then if you have those numbers, you could provide them to us. That'd be great.
Yes, um, I do have it. I don't have it with me right this minute, but I do have it in my office. Um, I can send it to you. Um, TA requires as one of the, um, auditing elements is a parent survey. And ours actually fell last spring when we had just gone to shutdown mode. And we still had to submit the survey out to the parents and gather it. I will tell you, we were above the state rate. So our feedback was more positive. We did not get individual comments. It does not allow for that. Um, the state issues the questions that are asked because they monitor it across the state.
I mean, is it usually done in the spring?
Um, ours was, yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you.
And you can just send that to Dr. Ryan. We'll put that in the board update. If that's the numbers he's wanting to look at.
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us. We really appreciate both of you.
I would just say, uh, Dr. Wishman does a tremendous job leading, uh, our special services team all across the district and every school. Um, and we've got, we've got teachers like Diane in, in every school and their hearts are this big and they love so much their children. And, um, they're truly serving students and their families. They have personal relationships with every single child. And, um, it's just a thing of beauty. And we're so fortunate to have, um, an amazing group of special ed teachers and, and special ed leaders in, in our special services department, all different types. You saw the different types of the numbers that Janine showed you. And I'm sure that that was a little bit of a shock. Um, but there's, uh, there's just a special place in heaven for our special services folks. And we just really appreciate the work that you do.
Next, our, uh, is the recognition portion of the meeting. Uh, the first recognition, uh, is for our school board. So each year in January, school districts statewide honor trustees for their dedication to the children of Texas as part of Tasby's School Board Recognition Month. Our trustees are committed to children and believe that all students can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. They work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision that we want for our students. The strong advocates for public education are responsible for the communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Our trustees provide leadership for student achievement, academic programs, school safety, district funding, facilities, and much, much more. They do it all by volunteering their time as these are not paid positions. And this year's theme is navigating, navigating to success. We've got a couple of traditions in our January board meeting to mark School Board Recognition Month. Um, and we've added some extra precautions and we were excited to continue one of those traditions this year. And that is, uh, the appreciation posters and cards and, and the different tokens of appreciation that you see around this room from our campuses, uh, from all across the school district. So, uh, board members, thank you. Know that our hats off are to each of you for all that you do for the students and families of GCISD. Thank you for your leadership on behalf of the staff, students, and community of GCISD. We don't have a lot of folks in this room, but the few that we do, let's give them a round of applause so that we can say thank you. The American School Counselor Association has designated February 1st through 5th as National School Counseling Week. The purpose of this week is to focus public attention on the unique contribution of professional school counselors and to highlight the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve success while they're in school and, and also to help them plan their future. Tonight, President Lisa Pardo will sign a proclamation to join in this week-long national celebration. But before she signs, Board Secretary Jorge Rodriguez, I'll ask you to read the proclamation.
National School Counseling Week Proclamation. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as there's, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, GCISD do hereby proclaim February 1st to 5th, 2021 as National School Counseling Week.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And, uh, as President Pardo signs, signs the proclamation, we'll have, Amberly Hill, uh, is joining us. Uh, she's the GCISD Director of Counseling. Amberly, would you like to say a couple of words?
Sure. Thank you, Diane and board. I am blessed to lead a team of school counselors in GCISD. They work very hard to support our students and families. And especially during this time of COVID, um, it's been a little more difficult. But I am so proud of the work and just thrilled to be part of the team. Thank you for the School Counselor Week recognition.
Thank you, Amberly. Thank you for joining us tonight. And, and please pass along our thanks to the entire counseling team who does so much to help our students do, I mean, it's just a myriad of things that counselors work with our, with our students and families about. And so, uh, please pass along our thanks and congratulations to them, if you will. Um, and going from National School Counseling Week to now National Career and Technical Education Month. And so the Association for Career and Technical Education has designated February as Career and Tech Education Month, or CTE Month. The purpose is to create public awareness of the value of CTE and the achievements, accomplishments of CTE programs across the country. Career and Technical Education, or CTE is, is education that directly prepares students for high wage, high demand careers. Tonight, President Pardo will sign a proclamation to join this month-long national celebration. But before she signs, Board Secretary Jorge Rodriguez will read the proclamation again.
Well, some of my fans told me they did a great job. They just texted me on the previous one. So hopefully I will not, um, disappoint them again. She's not in, listening to the meeting, I can tell you that. She had it after the election, so that she's done. So proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas February 2021 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain academic, technical, and employability skills, ooh, that was hard, necessary for true career readiness. And whereas. And whereas students in Career and Technical Education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And whereas Career and Technical Education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing their skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, and information technology. And whereas Career and Technical Education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas ensuring that employers have access to a qualified workforce is a crucial step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continued American economic growth and global competitiveness. And therefore, GCISD hereby proclaims February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Joining us virtually tonight are two of the best in the country. Rick Bracy, GCISD's Director of CTE, and Candace McGowan, GCISD's Coordinator of CTE. Rick and Candace, I'll invite you both to say a few words about your work in CTE and CTE and GCISD. Go ahead, Candace.
Well, one thing that we're doing to celebrate CTE Month this year is we're starting a little early. Next week, we will be releasing a virtual tour and lesson for seventh grade students to all of our middle schools. And y'all can look out for the video. During the month of February, we're going to try and release the video. It was a tour done of the Career Center about all of our programs with a drone. A student flew a drone through the building and we took you on a virtual tour of the building. And we had another student edit the video and it's over, it's taco voiced over by students and hosted by students. So it's a really cool video to showcase our programs when we couldn't bring anybody to the building this year, so.
All right. Well, you, you've heard some of the neat things that Candace talked about that we're going to be doing, but we want to thank the Board of Trustees and Dr. Ryan for recognizing CTE Month. We know it's an important part of the students' education in K through 12. And then as they continue on to whatever their desire is, once they leave our secondary education, we just hope that we can fulfill part of that and help them earn those credentials or whatever it may be to help them succeed at the next level and in life eventually. So thank you, trustees. Thank you very much, Candace and Rick. And thank you to all of our GCISD CTE teachers that helped run an outstanding program. You all do a tremendous job of preparing our students for life after graduation. Thank you for joining us tonight. Next, we have an award for Grapevine Middle School. GMS has been designated as a school transforming learning by Into Learning and the Principals' Institute. The Principals' Institute is designed to honor and showcase the work of campuses that are making exceptional strides on their journeys to provide innovative learning opportunities for all students. Some of the criteria to earn the STL designation include being a campus focused on transforming learning while ensuring student engagement, being a campus with a positive campus culture that values relationships, collaboration, risk-taking, and being a campus where leadership is clear in their why and focused on empowering and inspiring leaders. Joining us tonight, we have GMS Principal, Dr. Kaler. There you are again, Laura. And I'll turn it over to you, Laura. And I don't know if Eddie Colson is joining us or not from.
I am here.
Oh, you're here.
I'm here. I don't think I'm on video, but I am here and glad to be here.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to hear you, Eddie. I can't see you. But welcome to GCISD, and I'll turn it over to you for a couple of words.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ryan, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight. Grapevine-Collville has been a great partner of Into Learning over the course of the years. We do a number of things in terms of leadership development with both principals and assistant principals. And tonight, we have the great pleasure of recognizing Grapevine Middle School and Dr. Laura Kaler for her leadership as she and the staff there continue to work to build the learning of both students and staff and to transform the learning. The school's transforming learning recognition really is one that is not just given away. It is a significant application process, and it is one that we take very seriously and as we designate campuses as schools transforming learning. And Grapevine Middle School has worked hard in terms of a couple of different things. Obviously, they're working hard on many different things, but for this award, it relates to assessment and really valuing the feedback part of assessment. You know, when we think about assessment, we sometimes just think of tests and grades, but assessment is so much more than that. If we really do assessment right, we learn what students are learning and, and we learn about how much they understand or don't understand. And then we can adjust our instruction based on the feedback that we're getting from students. And so Grapevine Middle School has really worked hard in terms of using assessment the way it's designed to be used. And then also for creating a really, even prior to COVID, creating a really wonderful blended learning opportunity for students in math and reading. And then visions are having a vision even beyond, beyond Math 180 and Reading 182 to create opportunities for those subjects where any subject is not just done in a silo. It's done in terms of the complete picture of a student and how those skills and the content can be used and crossed over from one subject to the next. And how learning is really not just for an hour a day in math or an hour a day in reading. It's anytime, it's anywhere, and it's developing those skills over time that really make a huge difference for our students. And so Grapevine Middle School applied for and received the school's transforming learning award. And it really is our pleasure from Into Learning to recognize them and Dr. Kaler for their hard work. I will actually be at Grapevine Middle School in the not-too-distant future to see them in person, socially distanced, with a mask, everything, all the rules followed, but to be there and to give them the award in person. And I'm very excited to be able to do that. So, Dr. Kaler, congratulations to Grapevine Middle School, Grapevine-Collville ISD. Congratulations to you for the work that you're doing to make sure that students are prepared. I loved the talk a little earlier about the, the work that students are doing in relation to the profile and listening to the Grapevine Middle School students in the robotics program talk about the work that they're doing and how they're growing. So thank you for being great leaders of our district, the district. Thank you, Dr. Kaler, for being a great principal at Grapevine Middle School, and congratulations to you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much. I want to say thank you very much for Into Learning and for Dr. Ryan's and Dr. Schnout's support in allowing me to be part of that tremendous group. I have grown significantly over the past year, and this was just a wonderful, the icing on the cake to the work the teachers have really been doing. And so both teachers and students, and they've worked hard. It's, it's been a process, and we're still growing. And we're, we're still continuing to grow, and we're going to continue to transform. But I appreciate the opportunity, and I want to thank also everybody on the GCISD School Board for supporting our campus. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kaler. And congratulations for the school's transforming learning award. Dr. Colson, thank you for joining us tonight as well. You might have guessed that Dr. Colson is a former superintendent by the, by his way that he spoke about GMS. He was superintendent at College Station ISD, and he leads a group in Into Learning. And now every year, just a little bit about Into Learning. It is, it's something that we have participated every year where we actually send a principal each year to a group, a consortium of principals from all across the state of Texas. And then they partner up with like partners and they share their experience for an entire year. And so they have, well, they have in the past have had in-person opportunities as well as visits and, and learning from speakers, some of the best speakers across, you know, education minds across the country. And so it's a great opportunity for professional growth for our principals. And, and so to be awarded the school's transforming learning from this particular group is certainly a big award. Thank you, Eddie, for being here with us tonight, and congratulations, Laura.
Yep. Thank you for allowing me to join you.
Next, we'd like to recognize an incredible group of staff members that have been called into action more in the last few months than, than ever. Joining us are Amy Taldo, GCISD's Director of Health Services, and our first group of nationally-certified school nurses. To become nationally-certified school nurse or a NCSN, nurses must have at least three years of on-campus experience, pass a very rigorous exam, and the exam is similar to those required to become a registered nurse, but it's more tailored toward nursing in the school setting. The five employees that we're going to talk, introduce tonight, like I said earlier, are the first to earn the NSCN designation in GCISD. They began preparing for the exam last January, and Amy created a study group, and they met at Starbucks Weekly for, from about 5:30 in the morning to 7:00 in the morning, then went off to their campuses for their normal workday. After the pandemic began, they took it upon themselves to continue the group virtually. These folks are very dedicated. They all took their, their exam during the summer. They all passed, are now nationally-certified school nurses, in addition to being registered nurses. So we're going to call their names. You can unmute your microphone, let us know what campus you're from, how long you've been working with GCISD, how long you've been a nurse, anything else that you would like for us to know. First of all, congratulations to Lisa Cunningham.
Thank you very much. I'm the nurse at Heritage Middle School. I've been working for GCISD now for going on six years, and I've been a nurse for about 29 years. I love my job. Love it.
Congratulations, Lisa. Thank you for joining us tonight. Next, we have Katie Fought.
Hi, I'm Katie Fought. I'm the nurse at OC Taylor. I've been there five years, and I've been a nurse for 15, I think. So thanks so much for having us.
Congratulations, Katie. Next, we have Carol Flowers.
And I'm the nurse at Cross Timbers Middle School. I've been at Cross Timbers for about 16 years now, and I've been a nurse for about 30 years. So thank you for, yes.
Congratulations, Carol. Next, we have Rebecca Himmelberg.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Himmelberg, and I am at Bransford Elementary. I've been there for 17 years now, and I have been a nurse for a long time before that. And I'm very excited to have accomplished this task. And I also like to thank Amy for all of her support in doing so. And thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, Rebecca. Congratulations to you. And we have Connie Jansen.
Hi, I'm Connie Jansen, the nurse at Grapevine Middle School. I've been a nurse in the district for nine years, actually a nurse only for 11 and a half years, as this is my third and final career. And probably one of the best decisions I've ever made. We have the best nursing department in Texas. We've got the best bosses, most supportive, and we are so thankful to have the smartest group to work together. We appreciate being honored, and we love Amy. Thanks.
I don't know that I can top that. Thank you, Connie. Congratulations again to Lisa and Katie and Carol and Rebecca and Connie. Thank you so much for your dedication, for what you do every single day, and for earning this particular certification. Also with, also with us is Amy Taldo. Amy, thank you for your leadership. It's clear that your colleagues appreciate you. Is there anything else that you would like to add to the conversation, Amy?
Well, thank you, first of all, for recognizing these ladies. They, they showed up every Friday morning, come rain, sleet, snow, or hail. They studied hard. They took initiative once COVID started to finish this. I had to kind of bow out in order to focus on a few other things. My ultimate goal is for us to be a nationally-certified district. So I have been planting these seeds in all of my nurses for a couple of years now, and I'm kind of ready for my next group to step up so that we can kind of, I think it's one-fifth now have passed, and so I need to work on the rest of them and so that we can all be nationally-certified school nurses, meaning they're an expert in their field, and it just grows them as individuals. And I can already tell in their practice just how much they've taken what they've learned and implemented it. And I'm just so very proud of them.
Thank you so much, Amy, and thank you to all of our nurses all across GCISD. You have been called upon to really step up, and that's what you've done every single day. It's been difficult. I know it's been very emotional and trying. And we, we do appreciate the board for having a full-time nurse at every school. There are a lot of school districts that do not have that. And we were very well-prepared to be, to go into the situation that we have right now because of the decisions that this board made long ago to put someone that is a nurse at every single school. And, and we just appreciate our nurses and appreciate that decision to be able to have that type of health service at every single school. Thank you very much. This concludes tonight's recognition portion of the meeting. One thing I would like to add is that because of National School Board Recognition Month and our school board, the GHSP TSA had snacks and pizza and Sonic drinks for our board and leadership teams to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month. And so we want to celebrate the GHSP TSA and say thank you for, for your efforts this evening. And that concludes my, my portion of the meeting.
Thank you, sir. And I believe it was also project graduation, Grapevine High School project graduation, so group. So thank, we were flocked. So in the back, there are lots of flamingos. I guess, yeah, we even have them on our little drink. I, I will tell you, I have, I do normally not feel old. Rebecca Himmelberg, Nurse Rebecca, is a very dear friend of mine, and for her to tell me she's been there for 17 years, oh my gosh. That's a, I am just so proud of her, proud of all of them, but I cannot believe it's been 17 years. Oh my, oh my gosh. I, I think she's incorrect. I think we'll have, we'll have to go to HR tomorrow and see, because I think it's only been five. So we will move on to open forum. Did we have anyone sign up from open forum tonight? No? Okay. So then we will move on to report to the superintendent. Our first one is the health update for the 2020, 2021 school year. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, speaking of Amy, Amy is here, as she has been every single month since we've been working on the COVID situation, to give us a health update. And so, Amy, I'll turn it over to you.
It would help if I unmuted. Okay. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Ryan. I just want to double-check that you can see my PowerPoint. There, I can see it myself. Okay. Our metrics, again, they don't look great. However, on the phone call with Tarrant County, Vinnie did, he kind of had a little bit of hope in his voice that we are starting to see a glimmer of a little bit of a downtrend. The only thing that is not with that glimmer of hope is the death, the new deaths, because it is a laggard data point. And so basically, you kind of see a rise in all the cases, and the, and the deaths stay where they are. And then sometimes, as you see a decrease in a little bit of the cases, the deaths kind of catch up. And I don't understand exactly why all that happens, but that is the way he explains it, is that the death rate tends to be a laggard. So you might see the death rate continue to rise, but we are seeing some improvement in some of the metrics. So the positivity rate has not improved. It is at 25. It is at 24% right now, so you're looking at, you know, close to 1 in 5 tests are, are positive once they are administered. Metric 2 and 5 again kind of go hand in hand, and the rate of cases reported less than 2,000 per week. You can see in early January, a couple of weeks ago, we were in the 19,000 new cases a week, and that's a week, and just this last week, we were down to 15. So again, we're kind of starting to see just a glimmer of hope, but we certainly are not at that stable or declining count at this point. Metric 3 has to do with COVID-like illnesses that they are seeing in the emergency room, and that has been climbing. It is at 12% at this point today on their website. And then the percentage of hospital beds that have been used by COVID-19 patients is at 33%, and that is one that they are a little bit concerned about because that tends, that has been going up. They still have some ICU beds, is what he said on the call, and also ventilators, but that, it just kind of keeps creeping at that critical point, and so that's always just on their forefront of their mind, just to, you know, wanting to make sure that if people need beds, that they have them. The last slide I want to go over is that we have taken another look at the By Next Now COVID-19 antigen test that are provided by TEA, and since Christmas break, I have been working with leadership to get a staff-only, and G, and the students of staff-only COVID-19 antigen test clinic up and running. And it is going to be, we call it the Mustang Panther Stadium One Testing Center. It is located at the ticket booth on the south side, kind of under the scoreboard, and we've got things marked off. We have a Nurse Kim Stallow has joined our ranks and has been trained in taking on kind of the, the position of leading that testing center. We have tested in our softened startup, soft opening, seven staff members, two of which have tested positive, which allows us to immediately contact trace and immediately get people in quarantine so that the 10 days can go ahead and start, they can be quarantining while other people are isolating and get back to work and back to school a little bit sooner. So it is certainly working. We have battled the wind, we have battled the rain this week, but overall, we have overcome it and done a great job, and so far, some of the feedback I've gotten has been very positive. So we're very excited to have this testing center now for our staff and their children, and so just wanted to share that with you. I will answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any, any questions?
What are the, Louis? What are the hours of that?
The hours? Could you hear the question, Amy?
Yes, ma'am, I did. So, we've got it split into two significant times. So any staff member or staff, the staff member can bring their child to the drive-through clinic, 7:00 AM to 8:30 with no appointment. That way, we hopefully can get them tested, figure out, are we positive, are we negative, are we going to work in school, or do we need to go home? And so that time is been set aside for no appointments. If you need to come, come on. We would love to know that you're coming so I can make sure it's staffed properly, so that if we have extra people that need to be seen, I myself can go work the clinic and then also kind of gather if I need to train others to work the clinic. And then from 8:30 to about 2:30, because she will start her day at 6:30 AM, our appointments. And so you can schedule those, the staff members can self-refer, the campus nurses can refer staff members, and again, or their children through covidtesting@gcist.net, and that email is monitored by an admin assistant who will call them back and schedule their appointment and get some basic information and get the consent, and then there's an app that we have to report all of the tests to the state, and so there's a little bit of paperwork with that. So those are the hours of the clinic.
And do they just need to, if they don't register online, then do they just show up with their GCISD ID or employee number from the 7 to 8:30? Is it simple for, what I'm getting at is, you know, we've all gone through Tarrant County, we've all registered, we've all done the county we live in and tried to register on other sites, and it's very cumbersome and each one's different. I just want to make sure that for our, you know, 1,800 employees, if this is an easy process, that they can get in, get out, and do what they need to do.
So far, that has been the case. They can get in and get out. The test only takes 15 minutes, and we did, we did a soften open, but we also did a, what I call a rush test. So we had four cars, five people, so two people in one car, and then, you know, one in each other, and I had them all line up at once, and we made it through those five people and four cars within 40, 40 minutes. It was like 40 minutes and some change. And so, and I felt horrible standing around just watching Kim work, but she did a great job. It was very methodical, and it, you know, it, the process was wonderful because they were able to get results again so much faster than waiting. It is very accurate for symptomatic individuals, and so we are, you know, it's not a screening test. It is, if you have symptoms, let's get you tested, and, and then we have a process in place for negatives, and we have a process in place for positives.
I just got to commend you because this is, you know, take one for GCISD, and our mantra is best building excellent schools together, and that starts in every area. And instead of having to, because when we talked about this last spring, we were having to visit with employees of where they could go, where they could get a test, trying to find short lines, and then we're without that teacher or that janitorial staff or that coach, because did they get the rapid test, did they get a three-day test or a four-day test? And then, four days later, we found out they're positive, and then we have to do contact tracing, and then we got to contract all those people. It's a spider web effect. And so then here we are, we're doing it onsite for our employees and our employees' kids, and we can find out in 15 minutes and do our contact tra, I mean, that just saves you so much time on the line with Tarrant County, call, I mean, awesome job. I'm so proud of you, your team, and the district, being willing to partner with TEA and to do this, because I know it's, it's time and effort and hiring Nurse Kim, but what a benefit for our teachers that we can add on top of their other benefits that they're receiving. So, thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully next month, we can maybe have a testimonial on people that have used it, that are willing to come forward and say, I used it, and they can kind of give us some feedback as well on their experience.
We have an Amy, Casey.
Amy, how you doing?
Good.
Hey, thanks for what you're doing. My, my question actually goes into, as the vaccines start to roll out, are we starting to have internal discussions on reaching out to students, staff, parents, how they can get those vaccines once it opens up to the more general population?
And we are starting those conversations, and we have sent information to our staff. Right now, Tarrant County is saying, if you would like to have a vaccine, please go onto their website and register, and what it does is it sends you an eligibility survey, and it asks, do you have any underlying health conditions, what work do you, you know, what is your job, so that they can put you then into an eligibility category, kind of a virtual weight or a virtual line, so to speak, and then when your category is, you know, up and open, then Tarrant County starts to call and say, we have you an appointment at this day, this time for you to get a vaccine. The vaccine right now, and I'm probably going to put my foot in my mouth, one of them is really, the youngest age that you can have for the vaccine is 16, and I don't know if it's Pfizer or Moderna, that's where I was going to put my foot in my mouth, so I won't say. And so really, we're looking at, the youngest age would be 16. One staff member popped by my office and said that her child has already received it due to an underlying health condition. So I do know Cook Children does have some vaccine, and I asked her to get me the name of the person so that I could then possibly get some information out on our website that if your child has an underlying health condition, Cook Children does have some vaccine for that age group, and then we've sent information to our staff. My staff is 87% vaccinated, and we go for our second vaccine this weekend, and so then the Health Services staff will be fully vaccinated very soon.
Great. Thanks, man. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for Julie?
Becky.
Oh, Becky, I'm sorry. Yep. I'm sorry, you're right here in front of me, but I keep.
It's okay. So, I mean, with your soft test, you've done, you did seven people and two tested positive. So when you were testing them, were all seven people what you would call symptomatic, or did you just test seven people? Well, the seven people that we tested were symptomatic staff. Our, what I call rush drive-through, were just people that had helped us with this process and really came through in the, you know, whether it was technology or purchasing or whatever, and I was like, hey, do y'all want to come play with us for a minute? And so we, they were not symptomatic for that part, and we were allowed to do so many for testing and training purposes, and so those five were training purposes. So the seven really were symptomatic, yes. Out of the seven, then, you had two positives. That is correct. Oh, wow. Okay. And so what are, so out of those seven, what, what are the symptoms that you are seeing? Because the, and the reason that I ask is that every single piece of culture that I have seen starts off with fever, but is that actually, that's kind of what I thought. Tell me what you're seeing, please. We are seeing just a huge range. We have had individuals that have had a scratchy throat and just say, you know, something doesn't feel right. We've had individuals say, I thought it was allergies, like I just, it's congestion, it's a little bit of sinus pressure. We've had people say, I have had just a really bad headache that won't go away. We've had others that say, oh, no, 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 it hit hard, and it was cough and body aches and fever and more really flu-like symptoms. And then we've had people that have just had just the GI, the nausea, vomiting, diarrhea part, nothing with, you know, the respiratory. And so it's just all over the place. Right now, especially with the wind, the way it was last week, it's blowing in so much that a lot of people really are, have struggling. Is it allergies, is it not? And now we can say, you know what, you're symptomatic, let's test you. If you're negative, we've got a procedure in place. If you're positive, we'll move forward and take those steps. Yeah. That, that is going to be huge. Thank, thank you. I'm really glad we were able to figure out how to make this work. That's awesome.
Any other questions for Julie? Thank, do you, Colleen?
Yeah. How many tests did we have?
Um, we had, well, it was a little over 9,000. They took our numbers from last year as far as our PMS, what I call Snapshot Day, and they based the allocations for staff and students on those. So we have right now over 9,000 tests.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you. Coming, I'm a serial tester, so it's good to know it's available. I don't know if I'd make that announcement. You're joking? Okay.
I wish we would have had it three weeks ago.
Oh, yes.
When I was looking for a test, it was, it was hard to find, and then it was really, you know, three or four days to get the results.
Yes.
So, and, and the other thing that I think is important to note, you know, Becky, you asked about the seven people, two were positive, well, five weren't, and sometimes you start thinking, man, I've got a headache, is this, is this COVID? Or I've got a cough, is this COVID? And it's really, you know, so especially for a teacher or, or a principal, somebody that's, that's, that's working with us, it's really important to know. And if the answer's yes, then, then we certainly deal with it. If the answer's no, then, then that also allows us, in many cases, to put folks back in the classroom where, where, where they can serve children. So, it's, it's just really good all the way around. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you're so right. I think right now, we all, we get a headache, and our scratchy throat, and you instantly start being concerned that you've got, you know, I'm afraid I'd be at Julie's line every day. Thank you again. We'll move on to Item B, Act on the Superintendent's Contract. I don't know, it just went out. This is not a recommendation that Dr. Ryan can make. So at this time, you all have, you all have received the contract. We met on January 19th, Tuesday night, and spent five hours together discussing Dr. Ryan's contract, and so thank you all very much for that time. It was very important, very productive meeting. So at this, the recommendation, or this time, the, the contract that's before you, by law, we can only extend Dr. Ryan's contract by five years. So the contract before you, the contract goes from February 20, February 1st, 2021, to January 31st, 2026. So at this time, the recommendation is for the Board of Trustees to act on the superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I have a motion.
Yes.
I make a motion to extend Dr. Ryan's contract by one year to January 31st, 2026, based on a favorable performance evaluation on January the 19th, 2021, in accordance with Section 7.1 of his employment contract.
Thank you, Mandy. Do I have a second?
All second.
Louis, thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments before you? Dr. Ryan, we're very excited to be able to, I can't say that until we pass it. You never know. So, no comments, no questions. So all those in favor of the contract before you?
Aye.
Aye. Becky, motion carries 7-0. Now I can say to you, thank you very much for the leadership that you have shown for the 10 years that you've been with us, but for this last year especially, it's, it's been a year like no other, and, and I know we keep saying that over and over, but your leadership has instilled trust and confidence within the district between our, with our staff and our teachers and our students and, and the board. So we are excited to be able to extend your contract to, for the, to 2026. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thank the board for your confidence, and, and I really believe that the comments that we've heard tonight, the comments that you've talked about, they're more about our team, they're more about everybody in GCISD working together, from parents and students to nurses, front office people, transportation, food service, facilities, maintenance, certainly teachers, coaches, principals, central office support, everybody working together is how this thing makes it together. Technology, finance, I mean, it's just, it's a very special place, and it's a very, you know, it's, you know, I say all the time, we have great schools because we have a great community, and we have a great community because we have a great, because we have great schools, and it's just, it's just an honor to serve the students and the families in GCISD. And we've raised our kids here, first grade through 12th grade in, in our schools, and so not only, not only is it home, but it's our passion to be able to, to, to work with kids in, in public education right here in GCISD. So I'm honored and humbled, and certainly I just appreciate the people that I work with every single day that, that do everything they can do for, for kids and families in GCISD. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So this contract will go on the GCISD website, and it is public information. We'll move on.
That was kind of like, wow!
There we go.
Dr. Ryan, need to work on that.
My class lied for the board appreciation.
It is. I, I think Kyle was trying to start the wave, he just couldn't get it going.
Kyle's just trying to get you to go there. It's hard, isn't it? Kyle's blood, yes. Can I run? Come on. We, we have all done.
It is. We'll get going. Move on to Item C, Resolution of the Board Regarding Extension of Available Leave During the Pandemic in the 2020-2021 School Year. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, I know we've got Gemma joining us shortly, I hope, to be able to talk through this, but this is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
But, uh, this is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, uh, which, which expired, uh, at the end of 2020. Uh, this act generally provided paid-back time for employees, uh, that were subject to quarantine, advised to self-quarantine, or actually had COVID. And, um, many of our professional employees can work from home when they're not able to work in person, uh, but some folks can't. And so, uh, this is actually, uh, um, to a resolution to extend the Available Leave Act during the pandemic into, uh, 2021. Uh, so, uh, the recommendation is for the Board Trustees to approve the Resolution of Board, Regarding Extension of Available Leave During the Pandemic in 2020-2021 School Year, Ending in June 30th, 2021. There's Gemma. So we do have the recommendation, and then, uh, if we, if we have a question, Gemma is here to, uh, be able to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mindy. And do I have a second? Jorge, a second. Do we have any questions for Gemma or Dr. Ryan? None? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you for being with us, Gemma.
Thank you. And I just want to express thanks for, from our 2,000 employees who all could be impacted by this. And this move to help protect our employees, um, is, is going to go a long way with, with all of our employees at all of the levels. So my sincere thank you to each one of you.
Thank you. Move on to item D, and this can't be right, because I think we, I thought we just had one, but it's to act on the order for school board election.
Yes, the 2021 School Board Election is scheduled for May the 1st, 2021, the first Saturday in May. The Order of the School Board Election calls for a general election to fill openings for three-year terms in Places 1 and 2. The recommendation is for the Board Trustees to order a school board election for Saturday, May the 1st, 2021.
Do I have a, a motion for the recommendation? Oh, Casey?
Uh, I move to accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Casey. Now have a second. Colleen? Thank you, Colleen. Any questions? None, seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. That's very nice that the two knew. You've been there. Oh, goodness. Move on to item E, Act on the Course Selection Guide, the Updates for the 2020-2021 School Year.
Yes, in December, Trustees approved a roster of necessary additions, deletions, and revisions to the Course Selection Guide for 21-22. Uh, two additional courses need to be added to meet the needs of Aspire students moving to 12th grade. These courses require approval by the Board, and these changes, uh, are contained on the following document. The recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve the attached changes to the Course Selection Guide for 2021-2022.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jorge?
I move that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you very much. In a second. Colleen, second. Thank you very much. Do we have, um, any questions? None? All those in favor? And Becky, thank you. Motion carries seven zero.
Uh.
Thank you for coming in. That was the easiest presentation you've ever had to give.
Hey, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Ryan, and Brad, and your team about this, this course is something that we committed to the parents, and I really appreciate that you guys went ahead and got this done. So thank you so much, Dr. Ryan. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Move on to item G, Act on the Donation.
Uh, item F, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'd already marked it off. Um, we're in heaven school next year. Act on 2020-2022 Staff Instructional Calendar and the 2021-2022 Student Instructional Calendar.
Yes, when, uh, Dr. Gropel was promoted from high school principal into this role, one person was really, really happy, and that was Dr. Shaver, who said, "The calendar is yours, Dr. Gropel." So, uh, so the new guy gets the calendar every year, and, um, um, Dr. Gropel's done a great jo, great job getting feedback. Um, and, uh, Dr. Gropel, if you'll just give us a brief introduction about the calendar, uh, then I'll, uh, ask for the recommendation.
Sure. Uh, so several years ago, uh, Dr. Shaver outlined to the, the Board and, and the changes to the instructional calendar set forth by the state. Um, the state of Texas now requires 75,600 minutes for students, uh, and our teachers work on 187, uh, a day calendar. So in essence, you have two calendars, uh, within one. Um, as you look at the, the calendar before you tonight, and it's in your packet, uh, on, on attachment 27, you'll see a very similar calendar to what, um, our school calendar has been this year. Uh, the, the big, uh, change, uh, would be, uh, two additional professional development days on the front end, uh, and a Wednesday start date. Um, so let me say that again, a Wednesday start date. Um, so just a, a, just a little overview of the process of, of vetting and getting feedback. Uh, working with, um, our department and Tiffany Cunningham, uh, we put together four calendars, uh, and took that to our principals in October, uh, to get their feedback and narrow that four calendars down to two calendars. Um, after, after getting the principal feedback and narrowing those down to two, uh, then we then presented that to our District Excellence Committee, um, to get their feedback. Uh, after that, we went to our Council of P T As, uh, sought feedback from the presidents of the, of the different, the different P T As around the district, uh, in addition to gathering feedback from our teacher leaders and our campus leaders, uh, at kind of a same time in, in December. Uh, many of you will remember, we put out a survey, uh, uh, over the winter break, uh, to gather feedback, additional feedback from our community. Um, uh, we had a 610 responses to that, that survey, uh, and, and it was a 70-30 split for, uh, Option A, which is the calendar that's before you tonight. Um, gathering feedback from our campus folks, uh, and it was very, uh, mixed. I, I think there was no strong opinion either way. Uh, there, there were pros and cons of each calendar, uh, that we, Option A and Option B. Um, so, uh, tonight, we bring, bringing forward the calendar in front of you, uh, and, uh, any questions you may have, I'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Dr. Gropel. The recommendation is for the Board Trustees to approve the proposed 2021-2022 Staff and Student Instructional Calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Uh, do I have a motion for the recommendation? Mindy? Thank you, in a second. Casey, thank you very much. Questions? I, I will say, thank you very much for, um, getting so many opinions. Um, I, I think that's such an important, I mean, parents, um, look to this. And I know in the past, we've put committees together and all that, and this year it had to be different, but because of our circumstances, but, um, I appreciate that. And the one thing that I know I personally heard was that Wednesday start date. And that really came from some of our younger families, um, so in our younger grades. So I really appreciate y'all being able to look at that and be able to come up with the time. And, and the fact that it wasn't just the families I listened to, 70% of the people in the survey wanted, wanted that, that Wednesday start date. So thank you very much for the time you put into this. We really appreciate it. And Becky?
Yeah, I really want to echo how much I appreciate this midweek start. Um, and I, I saw some of the other comments that floated around out there. It included things like parents being really concerned about the other calendar option that had so many early release times, how difficult that would be on working parents. This one has three, uh, they're not unreasonable. Um, I, I, I think this calendar has a lot of positive to it. Uh, last year, I was not a real fan of the, the number of days off that we kept seeming to have. Like, every three weeks, we had a day off. Well, let me tell you, this year, of course, it's been a godsend, um, for, I think, both, uh, uh, teachers and students to kind of get that little oomph caught up, uh, time every, every three weeks. So it's a little unfortunate that we do have a bit of a long slog between, um, October 11th and then to, um, Thanksgiving break. Um, but, uh, you know, other than that, I, I think there's a lot to support our teachers and our students and our families in this calendar. And I'm really grateful to all the staff that worked on this, staff that listened, and then all the parents and community members that then, uh, gave their input as well. Um, this is truly a community effort, and I'm really glad to see this.
Thank you, Becky. Any other questions or comments? None, seeing none. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you again, Dr. Gropel. Now we'll move on to item G, Act on Donation.
Yes, this donation is from the Glen Hope Elementary School P T A. They're donating graphics to be installed on the cafeteria windows in the front of the school and on the front exterior doors of the cafeteria. Graphics will provide an artistic element to the exterior of the building. Total value of the graphics, including installation, is $10,500. Campus is coordinating this work with Facility Services, uh, and the vendor, Waterboy Graphics. The recommendations for the Board of Trustees to accept the donation of window graphics valued at $10,500 from Glen Hope Elementary School P T A.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Casey?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you very much. And a second? Colleen, second. Thank you very much. Any discussion, comments?
I'd just like to make a comment to the, uh, P T A Glen Hope. I know you guys are some great people. My wife helps do a little bit of that, and just want to say thank you very much for all your efforts and raising all the money.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, I think it's going to look fantastic. I mean, just the rendering, that is really going to be something special. A lot of hard work goes into that, but I think they're going to really appreciate it.
Schools that have done it looks very nice.
Yeah, they, we, we just did it at C T M S. It looks so great. They've been taking, um, uh, A honor roll pictures in front of it. So they've got it set up, so they've got walls on the other side of the students for that.
And that's a lot of fundraising. $10,500. It's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of work. So all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item H, Approved Change Order Number 01, Closing the Construction Renovation Package for the Swim Center.
So we have several items here closing out, uh, some different, uh, construction packages. Uh, this one is for, uh, Swim Center. Uh, Lee Lewis completed the renovations and closed that process for the Swim Center and has submitted a final change order to close this package, uh, releasing $144,318.19 to the district. Um, the, the recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve Deductive Change Order Number 1 for the renovations to the Swim Center, which closes this package and releases $144,318.19 to the district.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion? Thank you, uh, Mindy. In a second. Becky?
Yeah, I'll start with that.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Casey?
Uh, Paul, I guess you were the one who answered the questions I had earlier, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Or was it Dan? Yep. Yes, so thank you just for giving me the, the background on sort of how the, uh, change order process works and how closings happen. So, uh, I don't really have any further questions on that, but just want to say thanks for your time, and thanks for getting this to me so quickly.
And the question and the answers that Casey had asked along with the other trustees are there at your board, board seat, you received before. Um, any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item I, Approved Change Order Number 02, Closing the Bid Package B. So renovations to Glen Hope Elementary School and Silver Lake Elementary School, and in addition to, and renovations to Grapevine Elementary School.
Yes, Lee Lewis Construction has completed the renovations and closed that process for the campuses associated with Bid Package B. Therefore, they have submitted a final change order to close this package. The change order releases $303,925.22 to the district. Recommendation is for the Board Trustees to approve Deductive Change Order Number 02 for Construction Bid Package B, renovations to Glen Hope Elementary School, Silver Lake Elementary School, in addition to, and renovations to Grapevine Elementary School, which closes this package and releases $303,925.22 to the district.
That's wonderful. Any, um, a motion for the recommendation? Casey?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Casey. In a second. Jorge?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jorge. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to approve the, to item J, which is the Approve the Change Order 03, Closing Big Package A. Those are renovations to Grapevine High School and O C Taylor Elementary School.
Yes, Lee Lewis, uh, has completed the renovation and closeout processes for campuses associated with Bid Package A. Therefore, they've submitted a final change order to close this package, which releases $339,306.93 to the district. Recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve Deductive Change Order Number 3 for Constructive Bid Package A, Res, uh, renovations to Grapevine High School and O C Taylor Elementary School, which closes this package and releases $339,306.93 to the district.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Please, go ahead.
I'd like to make another, or another recommendation to accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Casey. In a second.
I'll second.
Jorge, thank you very much. Any discussions? Questions? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
If I'm, if I'm not, if I'm not, I could just say, these three items are really important. They're big. Uh, uh, and, and the, the 2016 bond program, uh, continues to move forward. Thank you to Paula and her team, uh, for working so hard, uh, to make sure that these, um, uh, projects are, are not only on time but under budget. And, uh, we really appreciate the partnership with Lee Lewis. Uh, and it's, um, uh, most importantly, we appreciate what our community does to support the bonds to continue to improve our facilities all across the school district. And, uh, as you walk through the hallways, and I know we can't do that now because of COVID, but, but I've done it. And as you walk through the hallways of, of the schools that have been impacted by these three bid packages, uh, it's, it's, it's a thing, uh, to be proud of, for sure, in this community.
And you're so right. Not only timely, but under budget, in a time that the, you never know from day to day what our prices are going to be. This is just absolutely amazing. So we just can't say enough, Paula, to you and your team. Um, so thank you so much for all the hard work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it'd be nice if we had about three or four more of these. We just kept going. I like these. I like these. So, but thank you. Uh, move on to item K, Act on Proposed Provisions to Board Policy F D A Local for the Inter-District Transfers.
Uh, yes, this item is, uh, as you stated, for intra-district transfers. And, um, so we'll, um, you can see that the, uh, there's some policy changes that are there. Certainly adjusting the person, uh, to which a request is given when a resident student becomes a non-resident, wants to request remain a student to, of the district, uh, to allow children of all district employees to be eligible for transfer requests upon employment. Uh, changing the time and period that transfers are granted for designated programs. And then, uh, uh, open, uh, open enrollment transfer requests, changing the process, uh, to animal, uh, to annual transfer requests, uh, and not a lottery, and clarifying the transfer request could be revoked by the district, uh, if needed. So, uh, we, um, have Dr. Shaver and Dr. Gropel here. Uh, anything else that you would like to add before the recommendation?
I would just say that, um, overall, um, each year, as we read through these, uh, transfer policies, we find little errors and little ways to improve the clarity of how we are saying the same thing. Um, so there are more word changes than actual changes to how we're doing the process. The main reason for the overall changes is really, uh, the shift back to the terminology for transfer request, rather than our general transfers being considered through a lottery, which was not a system that really worked well, um, given the criteria of that program.
Thank you, Dr. Shaver. Uh, the recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve the proposed provisions to Board Policy F D A Local.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yes? In a second? I see, a second. Do I have any, we see any questions or comments? No questions?
Actually, I have a question. This is a little unusual.
I don't think that's allowed.
I don't know if they, I don't think that, let me look at these notes. I don't think.
I will allow Paula to have a point.
Thank you, Lewis.
I just want to make sure there was a question from a trustee that was answered that would have actually indicated a change to, to, uh, the actual policy itself. And so I wanted to make sure that that made it, you know, you don't have that document in front I just want to make sure there was a question from a trustee that was answered that would have actually indicated a change to, to the actual policy itself. And so I wanted to make sure that that made it, you know, you don't have that document in front of you. And so I wanted to make sure that that is exactly what we're approving. But it's on the record correctly. So let me clarify for you. If you actually go to the policy itself, in the area that discusses grandparent transfers, which, I don't know about your packet, but numbers don't, page numbers don't seem to work. But when you're looking at FDA Local, it's page four of seven at the very bottom.
Of course, it's page thirty-nine.
Now, see, for me, it's forty-eight, unfortunately, the way this thing print, uh, works in Tasby's Board Book. But anyway, bottom line is, the question was asked about the children that are here under a general transfer because of their grandparents. So Dr. Shiver, keep me straight. Is that right?
Yes.
The policy currently says that if you are one of those students in grades eleven through twelve, and you become a non-resident, or your grandparent better said, becomes a non-resident, that you can stay and graduate with your class. There was a question asked about whether or not we would align this with an earlier part of the policy that mentions grades ten through twelve for residents to become non-residents.
Yes, and our intention was for that to match. So that would be a change that's not reflected in the copy you're viewing in your board book, so that instead of the eleven to twelve, it would also be ten to twelve if they are originally in our district as a resident grandparent transfer.
So we need to amend it.
And all of the guidelines remain the same. So the policy that's, that we're, that Dr. Ryan just made a recommendation is not the policy you just discussed.
That is correct. There would be one, one, a one change to a zero on that page. That needs to be corrected. So the recommendation is to approve the proposed revisions to Board Policy FDA Local. We were, we just didn't have the opportunity to put a new sheet in front of you, which is why to make, make sure this is recorded, that that it, that is the intent, and however you might want to adjust that particular recommendation.
I, I don't think we need to amend. I mean, you are making it clear what we are voting on, and we haven't voted yet.
We've got that on the record.
So the recommendation is still passing the.
Still the revisions. And that is, that is a revision that is presented in the meeting.
FDA, FDA Local.
That's right.
So the FDA Local includes the revisions that you just, okay, so I don't see a need for another motion at this point. Is that, does everybody understand?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Paula. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Good job, Dr. Shiver.
Move on to item L, Approved License Agreement with Colleyville Baseball Association for the use of the Field One at OC Taylor Elementary School.
So not only does Paula serve as our policy expert, she also works with our contracts. And so this is a unique opportunity that we have. We've, uh, kept the board apprised of this situation for the last several weeks. And it's a, it's a opportunity to partner with the Colleyville Baseball Association at OC, uh, with a, for a field at OC Taylor Elementary. The recommendations for the Board of Trustees to approve the license agreement with the Colleyville Baseball Association for a five-year term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for this recommendation?
I'd like to move to, that we approved Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy. In a second. Coley, thank you very much. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment, as a former baseball mom and having to search for fields, I love that we are partnering, and it's a win-win for the district and for Colleyville Baseball. So I think it's great.
Very true. Casey?
Hey, Paula. Um, so looking through the documents, it seems like basically from a school district standpoint, we don't have any liability because we're going to require they have insurance. We're not on the hook for the expenses because they're going to reimburse us. I don't know quite how that's going to work, but I'm assuming you've, you know, done your job and, you know, you're an attorney. So I'm going to trust you on this one. So thank you for that. As well, I'd like to point out, I think it's great that it's all, it's actually going to create a little bit of revenue. And so we're not just taking wear and tear on all of our equipment. I think that's a really good point. And finally, so you've done your legal review, and was there any necessary or additional legal review we had to take for like general counsel for GCISD, or are we squared away?
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to make very clear, I'm not the district's legal counsel. Don't ever purport to be that. I just happen to be a trained and licensed attorney. Proud of that. Don't hold that against me. But yes, the district's legal counsel did review this, uh, document, and we, we partnered together on putting it together. So, yes.
Thank you. And in being a former Colleyville Baseball Association baseball player, I think that was a great idea.
Maybe I missed this. Just wanted to ask Paula. So I know the, the association is, is taking over the cost to make the modifications they want, right? Thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then I saw that they were going to pay us a hundred dollars a year, and they're going to pay us twenty dollars per kid that is not in GCISD. Is that all the money that we're getting, or there's anything else that I missed?
That is initially all that the district would receive because they're making the improvements to the field. What will begin, um, and let me find the page. What begins later in the, in the initial term is, I believe it's beginning with year three where we have included, I've got to get to that paragraph. I'm sorry. Pages are, I don't know. If you look at paragraph fifteen on rates of use, school district does not currently have rates of use in place necessarily for an elementary ball, uh, an elementary field that really is just an open field. This, at OC Taylor, we happen to have some backstops. What we have included here is if the district initiates rates for use, and we are still in that initial five-year period, then they will, they will begin to pay in their last two years. So after the first three years have passed and they've had use of the field, in their last two years, if we have initiated rates of use for a place like that, they would begin paying those rates just like any other user.
So I'm just trying to understand, what was the reason behind not charging? Is that because they're making the, they're making them, the improvements that we don't feel that is appropriate to charge them any sort of fee to use it? Is that kind of the?
One is the economic improvement cost to them as a group. And second, we don't, we don't charge rates of use for an elementary field like that.
Okay, so we have tons of, this organization using our fields for free at the elementary level.
They would have been able to do that, yes. It's an open field. Remember that our elementary play fields are open to the public for use.
Yep.
What they really want is to make the improvements and have priority use, where they could say to another group, this is our time, our field, we're here to practice essentially. And other groups would not be able to, to do that or take that from them. They would have that priority use. In the future, if we institute any fees to use our fields in that way, then, then they would be treated like everyone else, and they have agreed to pay those rates. Right now, you can come through the inter-local, for example, and use a field and not pay anything.
But I know for like indoor courts, that's a different, that's different, correct? For like indoor basketball, and we rent those facilities, that's not, it's not the same arrangement. They can go for free to use it. Isn't that correct?
The park and recreation departments use our basketball courts, and we do not receive any revenue or fees for that.
Okay, what, what about just regular teams out there? I mean, we, do they pay us or not?
We don't really have any that use basketball courts. We have had an occasional team that might use, maybe it's a club or an academy team as an example, that might use a field for which we have charged a fee. But we don't have any regular or routine types of groups like that.
Any other questions? Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. That is the, um, we have no more action items. The remainder are all information only. Move on to item M, District Fiber Network Update.
So I've asked Kyle to, uh, our Chief Technology Officer, Kyle Berger, to, to bring us up to speed with, uh, the fiber optic network, uh, happening here in, in GCISD. So Kyle?
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. So over five years ago, the City of Grapevine approached the district about an opportunity as they were looking to build out a fiber optic network for the city services. And it came very apparent when they were looking at that, that GCISD facilities are right there as well. So they approached, uh, the district for a possible partnership in building out this network, which has grown to a partnership with, uh, City of Colleyville as well. As you can see, and at your desk, you have a detailed, more detailed map that shows the details of the network. Uh, that's an internal document that we don't share out for various reasons. As you can see, our district is widespread, as you know, and currently we pay for lease lines yearly to connect all of the districts back to our data centers and to receive internet connectivity. So that's a yearly capital expense that we have coming about. With our great partnership with the City of Grapevine and the City of Colleyville, we're able to go in with the three parties to make a more economical, uh, use of our money and funds to build out a, a network for us. That network, when built out, will be able to handle speeds of, you know, over a hundred times what we currently can get, um, and have growth ability for us well into the future, um, beyond any of us, uh, here in the room. So that's a, a great thing to, for us to consider. Currently, our lease lines that we look at only can carry a certain amount of traffic. Um, if we wanted more, we'd be paying a lot more for that. So as the need for technology grows, that operational cost would have grown as well. Uh, as you can see, the overall network is actually fifty-eight miles of fiber optics that are throughout both cities, um, and then a little bit into, of course, the Hurst area for, um, Bear Creek as well. When you see the breakdown, it explains, uh, pipe in the ground and fiber. So of course, maybe when you're driving around on the side of the road, you see these pipes that are just randomly sticking up out of the ground that are various colors. That's fiber optic pipes. So when we talk about putting the pipe in the ground, and then once it's all connected, they then pull the fiber optics through that. So of course, the first phase is putting the pipe and then pulling the fiber. So that's why you see the different types of numbers listed there throughout the course of the project. Currently, um, connected on to the fiber project as far as GCISD properties is Heritage High School, Heritage Elementary, Timberline, and the Heritage Annex Facility. Um, so we kind of have that core right now connected in over to us. By the end of this year, we're looking to complete, uh, the Grapevine side of the equation. What you can imagine has been the most challenging is, as you all know, we have a lot of highways, um, and we have a railroad track and all sorts of fun things that require lots of permitting and questions to be able to go across. So working with Tech Dot and all that kind of stuff, and having the great partnership with the City of Grapevine is what's really made that process possible for us and a lot more efficient. So that's what's going to get us our connection to the Grapevine City Core side of town by the end of this school year. And we're working on our connections right now with Grapevine High School and Cross Timbers. Uh, we're kind of waiting a little bit on that. We have some cabling work. We're doing at Grapevine High School right now, so we don't want to connect and possibly need to redo some stuff, but the lines are currently in place there. One thing, uh, that is a part of the project is all the connectivity will be completed on the Grapevine City proper properties, and then we will move to the Colleyville side. Uh, the City of Grapevine is actually, um, the operators and managers of the project, which is great. They do a tremendous job for us in putting the fiber in the ground. It's not outsourced to another company. So it's, it's Grapevine City employees doing that, the partnership with us, which puts a lot of pride. You know what's happening with that. Sometimes if you see some companies doing it, you, you can really tell that they've come and just tore up the streets putting this stuff in. Uh, you'd be hard pressed to see with the quality of work that the City of Grapevine does where they're putting this stuff in. So that's what really makes it an advantage for us overall, and why they're, we're going to finish that side and then move that operation into Colleyville as well. So there'll of course be a lot of communications when that happens, because you will see a City of Grapevine marked vehicles in Colleyville doing work. So there's going to be a lot of conversations. It's all part of the agreement that happens when we start that process. A couple of roads around there, as you can see on the map, are ones that are often discussed. So there'll be a few things that we need to work on. As you just look at our overall budget through the, through the project, uh, we still have forty-four percent budget remaining. A lot of the initial expenses, you can imagine with a lot of projects, is the initial procurement of equipment, um, and those kind of things. So that's all been completed, and now we're in just the build-out phase of the project overall. And you see the different, uh, breakdowns of how much each entity has put forth, um, into the project. Then last is kind of a graphical comparison to show you what our normal lease costs we're starting to average at. And you can see that starting to decrease as we start bringing on more and more campuses. This has been a great, uh, savings for us. As you, as we've talked at other times, as operational costs increase in other areas around technology, we're able to kind of swing these operational costs as needed to kind of help us, um, control some of those other needs that we have as well. So overall, when you think of the cost going from, you know, three hundred and thirty into where our payoff model is, we'll be able to pay off and have the expanded speed that we would not have normally been able to achieve fairly quickly. Couple of pictures just to show, um, the district does own equipment with it as well. We do have our own fiber optic team that does the splicing. Um, if you're familiar with fiber optics, it's a piece of glass. It's about this, like a piece of hair. If you look at what that is, if you take a piece of hair, it's a thin piece of glass like that. Our team is trained to actually splice that together. So imagine lining up just perfectly two hairs and fusing those pieces of glass together. That's a picture of the team, uh, doing that inside the fiber trailer. So our team is trained in that. The City of Grapevine puts it in the ground. Our team comes back behind and actually does the physical splicing of the fiber optics. That has come in handy sometimes when we have some other folks that might accidentally hit our fiber. We can roll out our own equipment and get that back online very quickly. As you can imagine also, with our partnership with the city, if we even had a larger fiber incident, the response for us would be a lot quicker than maybe getting in line with a, you know, other larger entity or company for us to say we have a fiber problem. Now we call our partners, the City of Grapevine and ourselves, and we can respond immediately to get those services restored. Some other pictures there. Did you see some of the workers, um, going through, uh, putting in some of the fiber optics, pulling out some of the areas and how they mark, uh, the groundwork overall? This is when we were doing the, uh, entry into the annex as well. So they have the pump trucks and so forth. Uh, overall, it's a, it's a wonderful partnership, um, long time and works between, um, all of our entities together. It's going to pay off dramatically for us and already has, uh, currently. Take any questions you might have?
Do we have any questions? Could you mind just refreshing my memory? Would you go back on funding? Is it due to the fact there's just not as much going into the city, or is, why is there such a large difference between our cities?
For the Colleyville side, yes, it's a smaller amount going to their city entities. The City of Grapevine is connecting more items like, um, you know, different light fixture and just different entities within the facility. Colleyville was doing a smaller, just the buildings only.
Okay.
So that's why it's not such a large, um, dollar amount.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kyle.
Move on to item N. Uh, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget update.
Yes, this is, um, uh, the budget update for this current school year. And, uh, so I'll turn it over to Dayanne's for, uh, for the update.
Every year in January, I start giving the board an update on where we are for the current fiscal year. As you know, the budget is based on, um, a lot of projected data, such as tax collections and student count. So it's important to go back and compare our projections to the budget to make sure we're on target. I start doing this in January because we have six months of actual data that I can trend off of now. Um, this year, it's, I will admit, it's been a little bit. I will admit, it's been a little bit different in looking at our student count. In the past, I've just been able to pull what our ADA is for the six, every six weeks and use that information. But as you know, this year, the state has provided us a hold harmless average daily attendance, which is ADA, to determine what our funding was. And they did that because of declining enrollment. They have guaranteed that for the first three six weeks, but beyond that, they have not. So now that I know our page numbers are not correct, I think it's on the second page, it's my page 65, but the second page of the just agenda cover sheet, I provided for you what our actual ADA has been for the last three six weeks. So for the first six weeks, it was 13,346.72. The second six weeks, it was 13,315.51. And for the third six weeks, it was 13,330.18. So those, all three of those ADA counts are below the hold harmless amount of 13,408.935 ADA that is guaranteed by TEA. So in order to project my state funding, what I did was I took that hold harmless amount for the first three six weeks, and I used the actual average of the three six weeks for the last six weeks, the last three six weeks. So we, in looking at what our state funding elements, we have to look at the three elements of state funding, which are tax collections, state allotments, and recapture. Based on the current student counts that I just talked about, and the current tax collection levy, I've calculated the state funding to the 112.3 million, which is 333,000 more than our current, what we budgeted for, for state funding. Last month, I made an adjustment to our budget for tax collections and recapture because I was, there's a, there's a new element in the first rating that is going to compare your budget to your actuals, and you have to be within 10%, which is a huge, which is a really big variance. But I was just trying to make it a little bit closer because when I got my September values from TAD, my tax collections were lower than what I had projected for the budget. When I looked back in, on my November snapshot from TAD, my tax collections had increased. So between September and November, TAD added a bunch of value to the roll, which increased my tax collections. So I'm going to stick to my practice of, I'm just going to wait until the end of the year to adjust the budget because there's so many things that can change throughout the year. And so typically, that's what I've done. So next month, you're going to see on our budget amendment report that I'm going to actually reverse that budget amendment out. So just go back to the original budget. If you look on page, before we talk about the numbers in the table, I want to discuss some other revenue sources. Also included in the agenda cover sheet, I talked about our other local revenue. It's, it's projected to be about 2.5 million less than what I have budgeted. And I have kind of laid out in the agenda cover sheet what some of those variances are caused by. The largest one is just our kids' U after-school tuition. That's decreased 1.6 million just because our enrollment numbers are way down. And that's, that's due to the COVID and the situation that we're in. Some other areas where our tuition-based pre-K, we've also seen a decrease in enrollment in that program. And then our extracurricular pay-to-play fees, those are, those are only about 119,000. But we made the decision at the district, as a district, to not collect, we were waiving those fees just with the uncertainty if we were going to even be able to play athletics. That was one area that we just, we waived those fees. So that's some of that. But the good thing is, I'm going, I started with the bad news, and I've got some, and it was some good news, is that we did receive the flood control payment in October, and it was 900,000 more than what we budgeted. We received 1.9 million dollar flood control payment, and we had only budgeted for a million. So that will kind of help offset some of that shortage in revenues. And although we are short in revenues, we're also under budget on the expenditure side as well. So that helps when you're looking at the bottom line. On page 67, that actually has the table of the numbers where I compare the projections to the current budget. So if you look on that page, you see that my projected revenues are 138,175,954. And when you compare that to the current budget, we are short about 1.3 million dollars. But if you look down below on the expenditures, the projected expenditures are 142,729,850. Those are also less than the current budget of 146.8 with a positive variance of about 4 million. So the bottom line is that when we, our current budget reflects a use of fund balance of about 7.4 million. And based on this first set of projections, which can change as we, we see actual revenues and expenditures hit, is about 4.6 million, which would leave us an estimated ending fund balance of 53.6 million. And so we will, I will continue to bring these projections every month through the month of June.
Is that it?
Thank you, Dayanne.
Thank you.
I would add, I did have a conference call with Chairman Capriglione today with HD Chambers from ALIF and Brian Woods, who's the superintendent in Northside. The hold harmless for the second semester was certainly a topic that we talked about. I don't think that they're in a position at this point to make that decision, but he was certainly receptive of comments from three superintendents from three very different school districts in three different parts of the state who were certainly encouraging the legislature to continue with the hold harmless for the second semester. That would be very helpful to every single school district in the state of Texas.
Do we have any questions for Dayanne? None?
Yeah, I guess the only thing, kind of in conjunction with that, then, Dr. Ryan, I mean, like, the numbers that, that Dayanne is showing to us, you know, so we started off at a certain spot, we took a dip into the second nine weeks, but here we are in the third nine weeks, the start of the new semester, our numbers are going back up. They may not all come all the way back up, and every campus is different. Some campuses have got more students even than we projected, some have less. A lot of this is, you know, looking dramatically at pre-K and K numbers. A bunch of parents said, hey, if there's any year to redshirt, it's this year, and they did it. So did y'all really talk to Geo a lot about how, you know, this isn't the regular school year and that parents are making decisions, you know, even just based on, on what our COVID numbers are any given, you know, six to nine weeks. And so how, you know, how receptive did he seem to be to that discussion? And especially the fact that, you know, we're all going to come up on needing to, to staff for the next school year. We may find out, once we start talking about registration, that, you know, a lot of our parents in those younger grades that took the year off or did something else, they're going to come back. And if they wait too late, then that's going to create huge staffing issues all across the state. Did y'all hopefully discuss that some?
I would say some of that was word for word, Becky. We, we talked about pre-K and K and the impact all across the state of Texas. In fact, we're, we're less impacted negatively in GCISD than many districts across the state are. But certainly the impact at kindergarten and pre-K is there. We did talk about the impact of, of staffing and, being a June 30 budget in, a July 1 budget begin. We've got to make some decisions earlier than other districts that, that don't have that budget year. We talked about, so the impact on staffing. So yes, we talked almost everything that you mentioned, we had a discussion. And he was pretty quick to say, you know, they're not, they're not meeting about that yet. They're not voting for another, you know, 30 days or even more about that. So he laid out some clear expectations, but we also were united in the front of our, of our concerns about the things that you just talked about.
Thank you. Thank you for having that conversation and that open avenue of communication.
Well, and certainly Chairman Capriglione, we want to thank him because he does a great job representing the school districts here in his district. And so he's always open to listen, and I do appreciate that about him.
Thank you. Any other questions? None. Thank you. Move on to item O, update on the 2016 bond program. Did y'all know that Gary is no longer our bond man? Paula?
Yes, ma'am. So walking in is Shannon Bearden. Shannon is an associate principal with Huckabee. She has been working on our projects with Gary and Lee Lewis since the beginning of our 2020 projects. She did a terrific, terrific job getting us through those projects. She's also been the lead architect, working with us now on our 2021 projects. And, you know, we're really kind of closing some things down at this point. So there's not a, a big update to, to provide at this point in time. But she is here to do that and preview with a few highlights, well, highlights of 21 projects and a quick recap of 2020 projects. And I just want to remind the board that when we kicked off the 2020 projects, we had no idea what we were in store for and what COVID was really going to do to it. And quite honestly, I have to at least say that, that Lee Lewis managed the conditions and the situations as best they could. If you will recall back initially, when everybody was required to take forehead temperatures and do all of those types of things, it really slowed down the productivity of the people that were even coming to work if they were coming. And just, you know, all the different things that have gone on and the need to shut down jobs at times to spray and disinfect because somebody had been on the job that was positive. So we're really glad that most of these projects were able to be completed as they were ready, you know, as best they could be for when we returned to school in person. It was, it was a big group and collective effort. And I don't know if you'll remember too, that right at the beginning of June, we lost our senior program manager who decided to go be an architect with a firm. And so we didn't add staff. Patty Ewen and the rest of the staff that were already there just stepped right up to the plate and took care of and handled things throughout the summer. And so along with Huckabee's assistance, working out different adjustments and things that we had to, it was, it was a testament to all of their work to get the projects done. So we're, we're kind of glad to be behind some of those and looking towards the future. So Shannon, welcome tonight.
Thank you.
Presentation's up for you. Rowdy will advance the slides. That's why you don't see them on the screen, but he, he will follow with you.
Got it. Okay. Well, thank you, trustees, Dr. Ryan. Thanks for having us. Huckabee here tonight to give you an update on the presentation. And I want to echo the sentiment earlier that the district, this community, has done a fantastic job of updating these buildings and facilities. And we're thankful to be a part of that process. So as Paula mentioned, I'm here to give an update on the 2020 projects and the 2021 projects. So we'll get this up here. Okay. In 2020, we provided six projects, the swim center, Colleyville Heritage High School, and four elementary schools, Bear Creek Elementary, Bransford, Heritage, and Colleyville Elementary. The swim center, as you know, is closed out. Swim Center received a new resurfacing of the pool, pool equipment, pool accessories like the splash blocks, pads, starting blocks, wedges, deck plates. We also replaced some of the water heaters and the cracked concrete drive, along with a few other updates around the facility itself. So if you haven't been over there, go check it out. It looks really great. At the high school, we have updated the learning commons. We've added a new controlled vestibule with security check-in and out kiosk. That also happened at all of the elementary schools as well. We've updated the HVAC systems on most of those campuses as well, including some of the chiller systems. We've updated all of the intercom systems, so that's your PA at every campus. We've added a dishwasher and serving line to a few of those campuses as well. And items that we have left to complete for those 2020 projects. So it's mainly, the bulk of the work is at the high school. That'll be wrapped up around August of this year. The biggest part being the fire alarm, which we'll give you an update at the end of this presentation. We have some doors that are over by the gym. There's four pairs at the north side of the parking lot that have some added hardware accessories that will be added in a couple of weeks to get those doors with access control during games. We will install the permanent doors at the vestibule in a couple of weeks as well, around February 8 timeline. There are still some hardware updates that need to happen at the learning commons, some of the media type rooms. And then there are other punchless items that need to be finished out on all of the high school and the four elementary schools. So that's mainly little finish out details like sealant and repainting a couple of areas. So the pictures you see, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. The pictures up there is Colleyville Heritage High School learning commons, and the other two pictures are Bear Creek of their learning commons and the controlled, secure kiosk at the front entry. Okay, moving on to the 2021 projects for this year, there are seven of them currently. The first one we're going to give you an update on is the Early Childhood Education Center, ECDC, or Early Childhood Development Center. Those drawings went out to Lee Lewis to bid this Tuesday. We will bring that package back to the board next month to get a GMP so we can proceed with construction on that project. Some of the highlights that we're doing at this building are splitting two rooms in half to create two additional classroom spaces, which will allow you to have more childcare within this facility, so more children at this space. So that'll be the upper left hand and the lower right hand rooms. We are also replacing two water heaters. We are replacing all the childcare sinks to be accessible for wheelchairs. We are relocating as part of the upper right hand classroom split, relocating the laundry room and storage room and providing exterior access. We're upgrading the intercom system. We're adding that check-in system, the Tulay intercom video system at the front door. And we are painting throughout the facility. The next project that also went out this week to Lee Lewis for bidding and will be brought to the board next month is the P-deck. This building, as you know, it houses Bridges, Vista, and the Professional Development Center. At this facility, we will install classroom door hardware as part of Fire Marshall request. We will add a security kiosk, that check-in and out kiosk at Vista. We will repair ceramic tile and clean it with a, it's a system called Santa Glaze. So it's a high-pressure system that does a deep cleaning and then it seals it. So it looks brand new without having to actually replace all of the tile. As an alternate, we're looking at redoing two group restroom, one located in Bridges, one located in Vista, to raise the toilets to ADA compatibility. So that would be the toilets and the sinks. We'll upgrade the intercom PA system throughout the entire building. We will replace drainage at the north side of the building, which currently has ponding on the sidewalk and the drive aisle. So we will replace- So we will replace and fix all of that with a drainage system. We will replace light fixtures at the parking lot and the building with LED for longer efficiency. And we will add roller shades at Vista. Okay. Next project that will issue in February, come to board in March, is the Transportation Center. So just to the east of us at this building right now, we will add additional parking, about 50,000 square feet. It's roughly 39 parking spaces. They do all accommodate the larger size bus at the 42-foot length. Our parking spaces are 43. So this will help with any additional buses that you may add in the future. The parking lot will have lighting. We will also upgrade the lighting at the existing facility to be LED to add with efficiency of lighting throughout that space on the building and the parking itself. We'll replace the interior shop lights with LED. We will repair the concrete joints and sealant like we've done on all past projects. If you, again, the Swim Center, if you go over there, you can see the upgraded work over there. And we will add an awning over the propane fueling station. And then as an alternate, there's two main entry gates into this facility at the north and south, off Mustang and Highway 26. We'll look to replace or repair those gates as needed so they function properly for the future. The next project is Facilities Warehouse. So just to the south of us right now, there are several projects within this facility's area. Again, this package will go out in February, come back to the board in March. At the shop, so this is the shop building next to the tax office. We'll replace the electrical panels. They are outdated and need to be replaced. We will also replace, there's large industrial exhaust fans on the roof. There's three of them. We're going to replace those. At the Facility Services Building, so this is the building next to the water tower, along with the warehouse next to it, we're going to add a sprinkler system to that building and the warehouse, currently does not exist. We'll add exhaust fans, replace unit heaters during cold months, if needed. And then we'll upgrade the video intercom system. The district is actually going to handle that as well. And then the large warehouse, this is the one that's attached to the Technology Building. We're going to add a card reader at the back, some of the loading doors. And then we'll replace some dock pads. And then we're also going to be replacing and fixing the perimeter fence around the entire facilities area, which consists of partial wood, partial chain link fence. Next project is the Cross Timbers Middle School Creek Drainage Remediation Project. So this project really deals with the side of the building where the gym is and where the wood floor has had to be replaced a few times. We're going to remove concrete around the building along with adding a drainage system that will properly allow for water to drain away from the building so we don't have those issues again in the future. And all of this will be remedied by that positive drainage away from the building with the concrete and the new flume systems. The next project is the Administration Building. So there are a couple of items left to do at this building, mainly around the drainage at the Technology Building. There is, if you notice, when you drive through the parking lot, there's a lot of ponding. So we're going to fix that by tapping into the underground storm drain system that is along the stadium. We're going to seal concrete joints and cracks to help with long-term maintenance. And then the portables, so this is CRC 1 through 3 and the Technology Portable. We're going to do a couple of minor updates that need to be done at those buildings. One is replacing carpet, a couple of HVAC updates, and then adding a fire alarm system to those portables that currently does not exist. And then at the White House, we will do the same thing with replacing the HVAC system, a new split system, like what you'd have in your house. A new ceiling and lighting because of having to do all the ductwork related to that system and adding the fire alarm upgrade. So that fire alarm will be tied to those portable buildings. Okay. And then I mentioned Colleyville Heritage High School and the fire alarm system. So this project did start last year, but there is quite a bit of work that has to be done. So it will be finished this year. Currently, they're pulling wire. So the picture on the left literally shows them pulling the red cabling into the ceiling. They're pulling it in the first, second, and third floor academic areas. And they, all of the devices have been trimmed out, meaning the fire alarm panels, you can see them on the wall. And all of the pool stations as well. The pool stations are there, but they are not fully trimmed out. That way, people know to go use the existing pool station that's there in the event of an emergency. So per the city, we're not allowed to take out the existing equipment until all of the new equipment is installed. They are pulling wire in the F Hall, which includes auditorium and snack bar and cafeteria, kitchen areas right now. And then fire alarm devices will be installed in the first, second floor and academic wings following that. Substantial completion is August 2 of 2021. So we're almost there. And then Paula wanted to add a couple of updates for some district projects that are ongoing.
Thank you. Just as a, just a quick reminder, we are in the process of resurfacing some of the tracks and D areas, and that work is going to be ongoing through June as they separate out the particular location and allow Paragon to move forward with that. This summer, there will be some replacement of science and fine arts classroom furniture. And as you know, we're also assessing play, elementary play structures for upgrades or replacement, depending on what that needs to be. And we have the specialist that is assessing our pathways to make sure that we have an accessible pathway to those play structures, either from the parking lot or the building itself. When it comes to the elementary play structures, you know, we're still in the evaluation process. We'll have some work that's completed throughout 2021 and some that may extend into 2022 just because we have a lot of elementary schools and equipment that we're looking at. So those are, those will be prioritized based on age and condition in terms of the ones that we try to address first as we go through this particular process. So that really concludes our update for tonight in terms of the bond. Thank you, Shannon. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions? A lot, lots gone on. Thank you very much for staying late. We move on to item P, review owner contingency expenditures.
Yes, there's just a couple of new owner contingency expenditures. And if you have a question, we'll be glad to address it.
Any questions? None. Move on to item O, verification of Board of Trustees' background check.
The school districts are required by law to review criminal histories of employees as well as other persons who have contact with schools and students. And all school district employees are subject to mandatory criminal history review. And the law applies to certified employees, non-certified employees, student teachers, and volunteers. And so as trustees are many times volunteers in the school and sometimes walking in the schools, trustees should also have a background check. And I'm happy to report that all seven trustees have completed their background check for this year.
Yes, I cleared again. Kyle, thank you. I appreciate you. I mentioned it as Louis.
I was going to ask, how is Louis? Is he Louis or Louis? Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Move on to our item R, review 2020, 2021, 2022 Board of Trustees' meeting calendar.
Yes, this is a really important document for trustees. And hopefully you'll place these dates on your calendar. This is the meeting times and dates for next school year's Board of Trustees' meetings. And so we have that for your purview. If you see something that needs to be corrected, or if you see something that there's a huge conflict, if you'll let Kim or myself know very quickly. Otherwise, these are the dates for the school board meetings for next year.
For next year. Thank you. Any questions? Did I skip an item? I don't think so. Budget, program, contingency, background check? I'm sorry? I don't.
We did. We did the contingency.
I think you zoned. You're still, you were still happy about the one before. Yeah. Move on to, no questions about the meeting, the meeting calendar? Move on to item S, the review, the 2020, 2021 Board Planning Calendar?
Yes, we just moved the student teacher calendar from December to January. So we took care of that item. And otherwise, there are no changes on the Board Planning Calendar.
Any questions? Move on to T, request for reports to the board. Do we have any reports anyone would like requested? No? Move on to the consent agenda to have a motion. Are any items be pulled? Items be pulled? So do I have a motion? Casey?
I'd like to make a motion to accept a consent agenda.
Thank you, in a second. Jorge, thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Move on to announcements. Do we have any announcements?
We do have an NTASB meeting coming up in February that I'll be sharing more information. It will be virtual again, but we're hoping to create it. We're going to practice it Sunday. We're hoping to be able to do some breakout sessions and allow for a little more interaction amongst trustees. So fingers crossed that the practice session goes well.
Thank you, Mindy. Any other announcements? Anything going on? No? I'd like to thank all of the schools and all of the posters and the gifts. It's so much fun. I always wake up the next morning and have my coffee and go through all the letters and the bags. It's always a great morning. So thank you all very much for all the support. We greatly appreciate that. Project graduation, thank them and Grapevine High School. So anything, anything else? Before y'all leave, I've sent the letter to Kim hoping that she can open it with changing Louis's name. But Louis, I would like you to take notice of this OC Taylor sign. They too know your name's Louis. So I don't, I'm not alone. Maybe check with your mom. Maybe you just didn't know. So thank you, guys. I need a motion to adjourn. Louis?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you so much, in a second. Coley, thank you very much. All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Becky, thank you very much. Hope you feel better.
Oh, yeah. I miss you.